I'll go ahead and call the January 21st, 2014 city council meeting to order and ask those who would like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Under special business this evening is Agenda Bill 6770, titled Council Vacancy Position Number Two. No formal action is anticipated this evening, and the purpose of that is to hear presentations from those applicants who applied to fill the position vacated by myself when I became mayor. The city advertised to fill the open seat through a variety of means. Seven candidates applied. The clerk randomly drew candidate names to determine the order of applicants as listed above in the agenda bill, and each of those applicants will be making a 10-minute presentation. I've asked the clerk to provide a 30-second warning towards the end of your presentation so that you have enough time to summarize if you so desire. There were five questions that we ask applicants to address either in writing or during their presentation, and those questions are: Why do you want to serve on the council? And who will you represent? The second question: What is it specifically that you would contribute to the council and the city? Third: What do you consider to be Issaquah's biggest opportunities or issues, and what would you do to solve them? Fourth: If you feel strongly about a topic, and the majority of the council feels differently, how would you respond? And finally, if selected to fill the vacancy, what is the one thing you would like to accomplish during your term of office? Just as for information, following our regular council meeting, the council may move to executive session to begin discussion on qualifications, but the appointment is scheduled, and that decision is scheduled to be made at our February 3rd council meeting. So with that background and that discussion, the order of presentation is as follows: Terry Davis, Bill Ramos, Joan Problah, Brian Weinstein, Nina Mulligan, Tim Flood, and Cyrus Crom. So with that, I would invite Terry Davis to the microphone for his presentation to the council. Terry, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Fred. Well, just for some unusual background, I'll say happy anniversary to my wife of 42 years tonight, but she's at another meeting anyway, so... For the members of the public present, since you probably haven't seen all the material the council has, I'm a registered engineer, degree in civil engineering, although you would find me more currently working in internet governance and cybersecurity, which is what I'm consulting in right now, so it doesn't make any sense, but life changes where we But I've got an extensive background over a whole lot of areas. I've also got a degree in strategic planning for critical infrastructure from the University of Washington. I'm a 30-year resident of the city. Over the last 15 years, I would say Issaquah has lost a little of our influence in shaping how the east side of King County develops. I'd like to see that regained. I think we've got some work to do within the city. I specifically don't think, and I'll talk about it a little more later, I don't think the downtown, Gilman Village, or even Pickering now have had quite enough attention in recent years. All of them have some long-term problems that I think need some work. The Highlands is going well, I was the first commissioner up there, so yeah, they're doing very well. I spent almost 20 years serving on most of the boards and commissions for the city up through the early 2000s, and then my travels for business just became too much for me to maintain that. I have since retired from Boeing, I'm only part-time consulting now, so I've got time again. One of the things I want us to, want the council, I hope they focus on, is coming up with a way to do balanced development across the entire city. We've seen almost nothing go on south of I-90 since the mid-'90s. I think that part of the city has been left out of some of the moving forward. In all my years on all the various commissions and boards, I neither looked for development nor non-development. To me, what I wanted to do is make the city more livable for residents, so my decisions tended to be not pro-development, not non-development, but what makes the city more livable for those of us that live here in it? And that includes both the residents and business. I would strive to represent both sides, the residents and the business, in the process, not looking to favor either side, but again, what makes the city the most livable? And as I said, in the last decade, I backed away from the city just because of my work obligations requiring so much travel. I'm retired and only part-time consulting, so that's not a problem. What could I contribute to the council? I am a 30-year resident. We actually built our home up on Squawk Mountain in '85. The building department was across here in a building that used to sit where the other city hall sits, and it was an entry via stair in the back. But when we moved into town, there was a four-way stop sign down here at Front and Sunset. We were just building, you were just building Gilman. The skyport was still open where Pickering is. So I understand the rationales and the history behind all of these changes that have occurred over the past 30 years. And again, I've got this natural desire to promote the livability of the city, not, I'm not pro-bypass, I'm not anti-bypass, what will work for the city? The city sits at a natural geographic crossroads. The city is here because the early settlers' trade routes crossed here, and that's true of I-90, Issaquah-Hobart-900. They're there because of geology. We can't change that, we've just got to manage it. Issaquah's biggest opportunities? Well, again, find a way to improve our regional influence. Make smart decisions on our expansions. I'm not saying don't expand, I'm not saying expand, but make smart decisions on them. Make the ones that work for us. Encourage an appropriate business growth, especially in the valley. And I think also we've got the opportunity to enhance our position with Swedish coming in here as a regional medical center. We have a natural location that works for that. And again, working with our adjacent governments and everything else so that we strive for the best balance that we can get in East County here of development. Our issues will continue to be traffic. As I said, we can't change our geography. We are captive to that. People are going to come through Issaquah just based on where they live and work. I would especially like to see the downtown get more attention for its business development. And I think Pickering Place is going to need some attention now, again, from the council. And one thing I don't want to leave off is continuing the disaster planning that the city started. The disaster plans, having lived here this 30 years, and I grew up in rural Oklahoma, and I never understood, we never had power outages, maybe once in a while, but they were a few hours, even after a tornado. I've been without power 10 days up on the mountain from windstorms. You've still got the earthquake disasters that you need to continue to plan for. One of the things that's been kind of left out is wildfire. We don't think of ourselves as part of that scenario. A good friend, well, two good friends, one a forester and one a geologist, used to point out to me that Mother Nature, even here in the northwest, routinely burns her forests every 50 to 100 years. We're 50-plus years past the last logging around. It's something we need to keep in mind as we do disaster planning. On how to deal with a topic the council feels differently than I do, I've been sort of dealing with this my entire career. I've always been on the technical side, trying to explain to management what they should It's important to work with the rest of the members that don't hold the same viewpoint, to try to educate them on my viewpoint as well as understanding theirs. That can often take months, even years. If you really believe in your viewpoint, you continue to work on it and continue to bring evidence forward. Okay, there are actually two things that if I'm appointed, I'd like to see accomplished. In the early '90s, we had a set of standards drafted for the downtown redevelopment. If you look at the Village Theater, the style of that is where we were going with a downtown redevelopment standard. Had we got that through...
30 seconds?
Had we got that through at that time, we would have had something that looked probably like Bellevue's Main Street development, at least starting. The other thing I'd like is to complete the trail system. Throughout the early '80s and '90s, we gave the city right-of-way, the commission did, along most of the major developments, including behind the medical center, north of Gilman, and up the east fork of the creek. I'd like to see the trails center completed and all of that that we started to give right-of-way.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. The next presentation is from Bill Ramos. Bill, if you would come to the microphone.
Good evening, council members, mayor, citizens. I respectfully submit my application for Issaquah City Council to you tonight. My reasons for running are many and varied, but they're based in a lifetime of public service and working towards the common good. I'm dedicated to serving the city of Issaquah and to giving back to the community that has meant so much to me and my family over all these years. In 2009, I was appointed to the Human Services Commission, which I currently serve as vice-chair. In 2013, I was appointed to the Economic Vitality Commission. These two commissions are complementary and to each other and foundational into building and maintaining a strong and vibrant community. I believe in the open public process of government, and it has been a pleasure to serve on these two commissions. Having served in the federal government, I find that city governments is the best example of active citizenship and the historical reminder of citizen legislators. Every one of the council members here today are here because of your dedication and active participation in the community. You're each willing to dedicate and volunteer your time in serving the community to make the city of Issaquah as best it can be. I would like to bring my skills and abilities to serve alongside you. In addition, I'm mission-driven in both my work and my personal life, not just for myself and my family, but for the betterment of people and places where I live. No matter what community I've lived in, I've always worked to be a positive influence and to try to leave it a little better than when I came. With this in mind, I went to serve on the council. In 2009, I was recognized in the National Award from the United States Secretary of Department of Transportation for my public service. And in 2012, I received an award for community service from the Seattle Federal Executive Board. While I would do my best to represent everyone, my experience in working with many different communities has dramatically impacted my understanding about the different voices that need to be represented, so I will work to be sure that I will always be representing as many different voices as possible. I'm privileged to have had a 38-year career in the federal sector, 30 years of which with the United States Forest Service and eight years with the Federal Transit Administration. As the Director of Departments of up to 50 staff, I've honed strong leadership and management and motivational skills. I am adept at project management and fully versed in the parameters of human resources. I would bring my expertise in environmental review and analysis. I have led teams of specialists to determine the environmental impacts of many different and controversial projects, and to clearly present and understand the impacts and the consequences of these projects to the people and the community as well as the environment. In my eight years as a community planner with the Federal Transit Administration, I administered over 400 transportation and community development grants. I also, the Federal Tribal Liaison, working with over 50 tribes to build a stronger and more vibrant communities through betterment of public transit. I developed expertise in building strong transit systems with rural and particularly small urban areas such as, similar to Issaquah here, as well as with tribes throughout Alaska, Idaho, Oregon, and Washington. Becoming a specialist in this area required excellent community listening skills, needing to understand what was already in place, what the people wanted to achieve, worked ways on how to achieve those goals, and to develop plans on funding and developing those. I also believe in entrepreneur and small business owner, having owned a dance studio for 16 years and now a consulting firm. I thoroughly enjoyed being a dance instructor, and it created a sense of community all its own. I still run into people today that took lessons years ago that share what a community experience it was. Small businesses are a critical element of the economic vitality of our community. I've worked internationally in Honduras and Central America for the United Nations Food and Agriculture Organization and the United States Agency for International Development. Many diplomatic skills were learned as a guest in someone else's country, at the same time trying to share ideas and work together to improve in their care and wise use of their natural resources. I've worked with a lot of competing interests for best short and long-term decisions, both within the United States Forest Service and the Federal Transit Administration. Difficult decisions require open conversations with all interested parties. I believe deeply in the open public process and transparent decision-making. There may not be a unanimous agreement, but the most important is that everyone is able to explain their position, why it has value, feel they have been heard and understood. If I feel strongly about the topic and the majority of the council feels differently, then the majority rules and the public process moves forward. While I may not agree with every position, I will always support the council's final decisions. I've always felt very comfortable working with people of different opinions, and then myself, I believe debating in any issue on its merit is a purpose of the public process. The city of Issaquah has many opportunities to make decisions that will result in a better city for all its citizens in the next few years, such as enhancing economic development and preserving our outstanding quality of life. The possible annexation of Kohani will result in a 25% increase in our city in a very short timeframe, and the implementation of the Central Issaquah Plan, both will be in the forefront of how change is coming soon. Both these plans are set up for the city to move into them and work those plans, but often, as you move into reality, things change and they look a little differently. So as both these plans play out, I would be very cautious to fully understand any adjustments that need to be made and make sure there are no undesirable or unintended consequences and stay with our original goals. As a result of my experience in the field, I'm considered an expert in transit and transit planning, and have a great deal of experience in witnessing how transit can totally change the community for the better. The transit situation now in Issaquah, both the current and the forecast future of that is a threat to our strength and vitality as a city. If selected, I would like to work and bring my expertise and skills to the city to help improve our transit situation. In closing, I'd like to thank the council for your dedication of service to the city of Issaquah for taking time to hear me tonight. I would like to privilege to be able to bring my skills and abilities forward to work with you in Issaquah in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Our next applicant is Joan Problah. Joan, welcome.
Thank you. I'm used to being up there on planning policy, but this seems really good tonight. So anyway, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about my qualifications and interest in serving on the council. I believe it is an honor to be on the council, but I also know that it comes with huge responsibilities, responsibilities not only to the citizens who now enjoy what Issaquah has to offer, but also to all those who will live here in the future. I don't take those responsibilities lightly, or any that I've had in the many organizations or committees on which I have served. I served as president of South Cove Homeowners Association for three years, where I began my training on effective ways to work with people. I served as president of the Issaquah Kiwanis because I believe in giving back to the community. I've served as president of the Issaquah Chamber, where I was chair of both the Government Affairs and Education Committees. And last year, I was honored to serve as president of the 5,500-member Seattle King County Association of Realtors, where I was ultimately responsible for a million-dollar budget and the oversight of seven staff. At the first meeting of both the Chamber Board meeting and the Realtor Board, the first item on the agenda was a review of the expectations of a board member. After discussion and vote, every member agreed that no matter the results, we were united in the outcome. I will follow that if I'm on the council. I've been on planning policy for eight years and now serve as vice-chair. I've served 12 years on the Arts Commission and now serve as chair. I served for three years on the original State Park Planning Group, on the environmental impact study for the Central Area Plan, as the elected VP of Government Affairs for the Realtors, and presently serve on the State Legislative Steering Committee, and many more. I've studied extensively on what it takes to build a dynamic community. During my 20 years as a Realtor, combined with my term on the planning policy, I've had to deal with issues such as shoreline management, wetlands, development rights, setbacks, lot line adjustment, impact fee, negotiating, strategic planning, balancing a million-dollar budget, and smart growth. I want to serve in the council to utilize all of my training to help plan for the city's future. In the last 15 years, I have served on several hundred candidate interview panels at the local, state, and national level, and now have contacts throughout the region. I serve as the Seattle King County representative to the legislators in the 5th, 41st, and 48th District. I'm also the contact to the 8th Congressional District to Representative Dave Reichert. I have twice received commendations for my work with the legislators and on legislative issues. I can only hope that the relationships I have developed will be of service to any discussion with the council. I have a reputation for thinking out of the box, trying to be creative in making improvements on the ongoing processes. There are two things that highlight this creativity for which I am especially proud. I petitioned the city for many years to annex South Cove, but was always told that it was in a distant future. But when the council approved $140,000 for Kohani Study, I asked Mark Kinthorne, who was in charge of city planning at the time, why not South Cove? Mark told me that the city didn't have another $140,000 for another study. Since the two areas are so similar, I suggested that they be analyzed together, saving in essence $140,000 for the city. He said, "I never thought of that." I participated in the feasibility study, and after it was decided to go forward, I formed a small committee and went door-to-door to explain the process and the intended results to the community. We sent out a survey and received over a 60% response with 80% approval. This type of response to a survey is extremely unusual. I presented the responses to the city tied with a large red bow, and yes, we did save $300 in property taxes. My second real contribution to the city involves transportation. It doesn't always take a huge investment to improve traffic, but you have to think out of the box. The chamber and the city's transportation department created what was called the Bucket of Paint Project. In essence, we could help mitigate traffic with just a little bit of restriping. While we're reviewing the plans for improvements to SR-900, I noticed there was no intent to widen westbound Exit 15. This was shortly after two were killed in the old eastbound exit. I contacted the state but was told there was insufficient right-of-way. I measured, took pictures, sent them to the state, and with the city was able to encourage the state to create a two-lane exit ramp. I smile every time I go by the exit. We all know that Issaquah is a special place. Just a few years ago, it was indeed a small city. Today, it is bursting at the seams. The Central Area Plan is really integral to maintaining its reputation as a desirable place to live. For the last several years, the Planning Policy Commission has been dissecting the plan, as has the council. It was always presented as a shell on which to build and improve as time dictates. Now is the time to lay the foundation. Transportation is at the center and has to be paramount to making any decisions, but any decisions in regard to housing have to be made after a lengthy search of what buyers want, not only in housing, but what amenities are necessary to entice them to move here. Working with buyers and sellers for 20 years, I have a pretty good idea and want to work to offer any guidance that I can. I am proud of the fact that I stepped up to run for city council several years ago. Win or lose, the process develops character, an understanding of the responsibilities, and a real sense of what the community wants. I met hundreds of people, heard their stories, and traveled to areas of the city that I have lived in. I met hundreds of people, heard their stories, and traveled to areas of the city that I didn't know existed. Many were concerned about the effects of doing anything to our downtown section. Our old town is, and will always be, the heart and soul of this community, and we must make changes to protect its viability. The future is upon us. I would like to see more emphasis on creating an area that is unique, maintains its character, and offers more opportunities as a gathering place. I know DIA is starting to work on this, but I think ideas should come from all avenues. There will always be issues with water, pot, bags, police, fire, but these issues do not define a community. They are handled through cooperation, understanding, and creativity with all of the stakeholders. I would like to see more citizen involvement, or to put it this way, I'd like to create more opportunities that citizens can join in the conversation and present their ideas. The changes to the city website are a beginning step, but more can be done. When I started my year as president of the Realtor Association, I was faced with a staff and a twenty-member board of directors that was a little disjointed. Through listening, complimenting when appropriate, and developing team spirit, I not only created a better working environment, but also more ideas to prove the association came from people who felt they were valued. I hope to do this on the council. Economic development is not only bringing business into the city. It is more than the great work that DIA and the Art East are doing to highlight art. It is creating an atmosphere where business can thrive. One way to do that is to cultivate a relationship between business and the environment. Issaquah is unique. Its trails offer opportunities for unlimited enjoyment, but also can act as catalysts in bringing in businesses that support outdoor recreation. Issaquah needs a gathering place that actually draws bikers and hikers downtown, and then from there to the hills beyond. We need to protect the environment, but we also need to provide opportunities to enjoy it. We need to do a better job in packaging Issaquah as the gateway to those beautiful hills that surround us. And finally, we should be proud of the city's heritage and showcase it for our visitors. I would like to begin a process to create a new, complete, modern museum to highlight our past because it influences our future. After many years, the Human Services Commission is closer realizing their dream of providing a place to help the less fortunate in our community. I would like to see a similar process to showcase our history. This would have to be a public-private endeavor. This would be one of many possibilities to get projects done in the city. So thank you for considering my application, and if you have any questions, I certainly would be willing to answer them. I have my information is at the bottom of that sheet, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Brian Weinstein is next.
Hey. Mayor Butler, City Council, resident of Issaquah. My name is Brian Weinstein, and rather than go through and answer a series of questions, some of those answers of which I've already submitted to the council, I'm going to tell sort of a brief narrative story here, and I hope it amuses you or horrifies you. I don't know which it will be, but this is some information that I'd like to give you about myself. I'm originally from Los Angeles, California. I was born and raised there. I attended the University of Southern California and graduated there with a degree in Business Administration. I became a California-certified public accountant, worked for many years auditing municipalities, for one thing, other small businesses, large businesses, did income tax returns for all sorts of businesses, corporations, partnerships, as well as individuals. In 1992, I was offered an employment opportunity by an upstart finance company in Portland, Oregon, to become their chief financial officer, which I took and managed to grow that company to a large, international, diversified finance company. We had over 400 employees worldwide. We syndicated, for lack of a better term, junk bonds on Wall Street, and we were very successful. My son Noah was born in 1999, and I decided that would be a good opportunity to change careers, and I got involved in information systems. And in 2000, I was offered a position at Microsoft here in Washington, and I moved to Issaquah. I can't tell you how great it is to live in an apartment and be able to walk to work. And I did that for a year, and Issaquah was a great place that I enjoyed seeing and enjoyed living. And I decided that in 2001, I would buy a house here in Old Town, which is exactly what I did, and my family and I have been living there ever since. In 2010, Microsoft and I had a parting of the ways, and I pursued some self-employment opportunities here in Issaquah as a business consultant and a programmer. I also did a lot of volunteer work, got involved with a boutique software company, and the next thing I knew, I was back at Microsoft where I work now for Bing. When I moved here in 2001 to a house in Old Town, one of the things that became apparent to me was there was going to be a road built in our neighborhood. That road was called the Southeast Bypass. I, coming from Los Angeles, looked at what the potential for that would be in our neighborhood and saw, like a lot of people did, a freeway going through Tiger Mountain. Talking with a lot of folks in the neighborhood, getting involved at community meetings, talking with people on the council, including Mayor Freysenger at the time, as well as boards and commissions, it became evident to me that the city had involved in a flawed process based on flawed policy that was going to result in a flawed result, a defined result. And I didn't think that was right. I got more involved, talked with more people, and next thing I knew, Mayor Freysinger was kind enough to appoint me to the Planning Policy Commission where I sat for a while. Continued to learn a lot of things about the city of Issaquah, and in 2003, decided to run for city council. I can't tell you what it's like to go knocking on doorbells, knocking on doors, people's homes all around the town, people you don't know, and have them tell you what it's like to live in Issaquah, how much they love it, in some cases, how much they would like for it to be better. You listen to their hopes, their dreams, their aspirations, and you take that in. And when you come to candidate meetings or go to debates, you try and voice that, and you try and think of those people and what they would want and how Issaquah can be better for them. In the end, I didn't win, but the bypass wasn't built either. Up until 2007, I was still involved in what was happening in Issaquah. I noticed that there was sort of a fiscal accountability, ability, fiscal responsibility issues. I just sort of felt the city has so many assets, so many opportunities, to do things in a way that doesn't burden taxpayers, doesn't burden its residents, doesn't burden our businesses. I ran for election again in 2007 against then-council president Fred Butler, now mayor Butler. I didn't win, but I still got involved. I still became interested in things that were happening in our community. I got involved at Issaquah High School in junior achievement and teaching business and finance to some of the students there. And one of the things I always tell students are what I call the four cardinal rules of finance. More is better than less, sooner is better than later, certain is better than uncertain, and use other people's money. Issaquah sits on some of the best assets on the east side, parks. Everybody wants to come to our parks. We don't have enough parks that have lighted fields, or in some cases, not enough unlighted fields. Trails, trails that are the envy of the whole Puget Sound. We have beautiful lakes of Mamish, and everything that that asset can be has a place for business, recreation, and enjoyment. We have the plateau and everything that's happening up there. We have our amazing people resources, all of our citizens who live here. We have existing businesses, and we have an environment that is capable of bringing in even more. And yet, when I look at all of these things, like a lot of citizens, I see that the growth that we have had in the last twenty years has not paid for itself. We have, at this point, nearly $27 million of debt to the city against 31,000 people who live here. That's nearly $900 per person in debt. If growth had been paying for itself, we wouldn't need all of those bonds for parks, for services, and council manic bonds that the city council has decided to get indebted with without a vote of the people. Many of us wonder why our huge growth has not paid for improvement to roads, parks, city infrastructure, our pool, and maybe even a second pool, and certainly our schools as well. What I've found is there's a systemic lack of bargaining power, or even the desire to represent our citizens. When we go to the position of coming to contracts with developers, with businesses, with anybody who wants to get involved and help the city of Issaquah, we are on the short end of the stick. Transportation, how exactly has our partnership with Sound Transit and Metro benefited residents who still are without convenient transit? And what's going to happen in the future? For our human services, I still don't know where our single point, our place of a human service campus is. For parks and recreation, we have a bond issue that's coming up. We shouldn't need a bond issue to pay for improvements to the Julius Bone Pool with all the improvements and with all the growth that we've experienced. Fiscal constraints on vital city resources. We often hear, "We are limited headcount, we are limited by money." I need to know why, and if I were on the council, I would want to find out why. Finally, many of our residents talk about the changing nature of our neighborhood that so many citizens look at. Multifamily construction that's taking place in Old Town, four-story buildings, notice given to people, not given to people, additional traffic, already there's so much cut-through traffic, and noise as well. If appointed to the council, I would like to change the calculus of how our fiscal policies are made. I would like to have the council look at all of the policies the council has to create, from the boards and commissions, from the city staff, and come to a recognition that where is the city being benefited when we talk about our residents, the business, the environment? How are we going to get, not the short end of the stick anymore, from the business dealings, from whatever contractual obligations, whatever discussions we want to have with our regional partners and everybody else who's out there? Issaquah has a great need for services, for jobs, for an economy that generates quality jobs for our residents, and continues to make Issaquah a great destination for everything that we need: people, businesses, and visitors. That's what's important. Some things that you may not know about me, I am not a curmudgeon. I ride a motorcycle. I also drive a Jeep. I like The Three Stooges. I like cheese. We all love Issaquah. We are all looking at the same thing. You'll hear these same themes, I'm sure, from every very well-qualified person who wants to sit on the council. The only thing that's different is our point of view, and I would like to offer you my point of view for the benefit of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Our next applicant is Nina Mulligan. I may have, I can do a better job pronouncing your last name. Nina Mulligan.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, and I brought copies of my comments. I've just given the clerk speech notes. They're not really a speech, they're just speech notes to perhaps spur your memory later if you're wondering what it is I said about that. And I want to say right off the bat that I've forgotten what I was going to say. I'm really glad I have notes because I so love listening to the presenters of the other applicants. This is a great opportunity for me to get to know my neighbors, and I'm so impressed with this pool of applicants that now I've forgotten what I was going to say to you. But the first thing I'm going to say is thank you. And thank the members of the council, and Mr. Mayor, and the staff, and all of you who've come to support us for this opportunity to present my application for the open seat on the city council. And I'm going to use the structure of the questions that you provided to give you a little bit more information about me. I tended to focus on a couple of the things I'm most interested in, but I would say that one of the things about serving on the city council is that you get to discuss and work on such a variety of things. And I really appreciated Joan Probelo's overview of many of the topics that the city council addresses, and I look forward to that. That's one of the reasons why I would like to be on the council. I currently serve on the Urban Village Development Commission, and I'm very happy with that appointment. I enjoy the work we do. I enjoy land use issues. But after being there for about eight years, I'm ready and eager to jump out and look at bigger pictures or things that are more all-embracing and the interconnectedness of issues that face the city. That's one reason why I would like to serve on the council. Who would I represent? Well, I would represent the entire city, like the rest of us have said, and we know we don't have districts. I would represent the entire city. I thought I might take an angle on that question, thinking that maybe what you're looking at is, well, who is she? Is she somebody different or special, or maybe a part of a group, something that would reflect on who she might represent more than another? But I'd like to say to you that I'm a combination that I hope will be helpful to the council. I'm a nostalgically native Washingtonian. I love old Issaquah. I was born in Seattle. I grew up, my youngest years in Bellevue, and then moved up to Langley and Whidby Island and grew up there. I went to college in Ellensburg, coming through here, hiking, using Issaquah for all it had to offer. So I love Issaquah for what it's always been. But my husband and I bought into the new Issaquah. We live in Issaquah Highlands, and we certainly sincerely, in buying our home there, made a vote for what Issaquah could be, and that's one thing that the Issaquah Highlands is showing. So I'd say that I look at these things from both sides, an old and a new citizen. What would I like to contribute to the city was another one of your questions. And I may, just in case you wouldn't know this, but like all of us, we would contribute care, understanding, compassion, patience, generosity, and enthusiasm for the city. All of us would do that. So I was trying to think, though, what would be different from, about me? One thing that I would contribute is a broad understanding of wide-ranging topics. In the application form, you asked about our formal education, and I put down my college education, but I also put down that I spent six years attending continuing legal education programs. And that's a little crazy, and I don't know anybody else who's done this. I worked for a company that offered these around the country. I spent time in other jurisdictions from upstate New York to Boston to Washington DC to San Francisco, and learned about many topics while I did that. They included environmental protection, risk management, land use planning, real estate and investments, transportation, energy policy, utilities management, corporations, closely-held businesses, and family businesses. And I really want to put that to use. I'm looking for a position that addresses so many different topics. I also am unique in that I have served on the Urban Village Development Commission for eight years, and I was involved in the Central Issaquah Plan, so I feel well-informed about the, many of the things in our future that we're working on. And I have a deep passion, fondness, and respect for the functions of government and the rule of law. I like working in the structure of a government body. I like the way the rules are set up and the civility of it all. It's something that I enjoy very much. You asked what we thought would be the biggest opportunities or issues, and how would we solve them? And I'd like to approach both those topics and say that our biggest opportunity in Issaquah is our biggest treasure, our greatest treasure, and that's our location and our natural surroundings. I appreciated the comment earlier that we're at this crossroads, and that is an important part. It's not just a crossroads of people, but it's a crossroads of nature, where mountains and watersheds come together. I think that the people take seriously the role of steward for the key elements of our region's environment, not just Issaquah's. Being on the shores of Lake Mamish, managing and being stewards of its great watershed, especially with Issaquah Creek, this is all very important to us and it would be to me too. I'd like to leverage those opportunities that a city government can employ to focus our efforts on restoring and preserving our natural assets as they being the most important things that we have. But the question also allowed us to talk about what challenges face the city of Issaquah. And it's oversimplifying, but I would, for the sake of the presentation, I'd like to say that it's the rate of growth is the greatest challenge in the city of Issaquah. I think that we could find a better balance. We could balance better with environmental stewardship. I believe that it's difficult to address, for instance, the managing of stormwater in an ever-urbanizing, in an ever-urbanizing environment. And I think we could also balance residential growth better with business opportunities and jobs. Think of it this way, I pulled some statistics for you. Our average home price is $450,000. According to the census, 60% of our population has a bachelor's degree or better. The mean travel time to work for Issaquians is almost 30 minutes. The mean travel time to work for Issaquahians is almost 30 minutes, and the median household income is $87,000. These statistics indicated to me that our brain power and income-earning power is going outside of Issaquah, and I would like to keep it here. I'd like to attract great employers and to incent entrepreneurs. And with that, though, I don't want to forget to thank those businesses who are here: Costco, Swedish, the rest of the medical community, which continues to find this a good place to have business, Sandmar, and the many others who provide business and job opportunities for people. You asked if we felt strongly about a topic, and the majority felt otherwise, how would we address that? Not unlike the others, I would express my opinion as best I can, dig deep and think if I'm saying it correctly, and can I say it a different way? I'd like to listen and re-listen to the majority, ask some better questions, see what it might be that I'm missing. But if, in the end, I hold a different opinion than the majority, I would have to vote, I'd like to vote my opinion so that it's clear and it's stated for the record. But then you move on and accept the decision of the council and work towards the next topic. If I were selected to fill the vacancy, what would I like to accomplish during the term of office? Term of office going to November 2015. Where I'd like to work on balancing residential growth with commercial growth, and I'm excluding, I think we have plenty of retail growth, by the way. I'm looking for commercial growth that can employ those people that I identified earlier. And I'd like to create a city where professionals live and actually work and play. We know they live and play here. And I'd like to maximize the groundwork that the Central Issaquah Plan has provided and the efforts of our Economic Vitality Commission. And why would I want to do these things? I think that the commercial development will improve our tax base, referring to comments earlier in that regard. I'd like to reduce the need for travel outside the city to work. This reduces the demand for transportation, which we find a challenge and an expensive proposition. I also find that...
Thirty seconds?
Thank you. Transportation, if we can reduce transportation needs, we can reduce its environmental impacts. I believe that living and working in this town would strengthen families, increase engagement in the community, and increase engagement and pride in our environment. In closing, I just wanted to bring up, maybe some of you have seen that in the Sunset Magazine, we were named the best burb in Sunset Magazine, it's coming out in the February issue, and that's kind of neat. But the Merriam-Webster's definition of a suburb is "an outlying part of a city or town."
That's time.
Thank you. And I'd like to be the city or town. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. I'd like to call forward Tim Flood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members and city staff, and really everyone that's here for your service and for hearing me out this evening. My wife and I love the city of Issaquah. I won't go through everything I have down, because you've heard it already, what makes Issaquah such a special place to live. And I look at the role of the city council as making decisions that help to basically maintain and, if possible, improve the quality of life that all of our citizens have. I look at a position like council as an opportunity to give a voice to the citizens I represent and to help shape the city's future. I'd like to talk just a bit about my qualifications, and then make sure I address the questions on the application, and touch on how I would approach a seat on the council. Personally, I'm from, originally from the state of Maryland, where I earned my bachelor's degree from the University of Maryland College Park in Business Administration. After a year in Boise, Idaho, I've spent the past seven years in Washington, all on the East Side, the last two years being in South Cove. I've earned my MBA here in Seattle, the City U, and I make my living in information technology. I currently hold the title of Account Director for an analytics consulting firm, and I'm also pursuing another graduate certification in data analytics. I've been married to my wife Lauren, who is a fourth-grade teacher in the city of Bellevue for the past three years, coming up on four years. So I'm very impressed with my fellow applicants and a lot of their board service and years of service. So I have a little bit different resume, but I've spent my time over the past several years volunteering for causes that I believe in, namely, the first of which is Washington Conservation Voters. I was fortunate enough to be able to interview our current mayor, who earned our endorsement in this past election season. And I think it's safe to say, we gave him the 26% that he needed to crest the 75% mark. That's a joke for the millions watching at home. Also, a graduate of the Issaquah CERT program, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, is happy to hear a couple of mentions this evening, and also a member of the Issaquah Citizens Corps. And through that process, I was able to see, similar to this process that I went through one time before, and tonight, just how many people there are out there. There are hundreds of people within Issaquah and Costco specifically that have gone through that program. I had a chance to speak with a gentleman here this evening from Eastside Fire and Rescue, and I'm proud to represent that organization as a CERT. I've been elected a precinct committee officer for my neighborhood. I was on the Proposition 1, Parks Bond that came up for election, and won with 77% this past election cycle. I was a founding member of the Friends of Lake Simamish State Park. I attended a training and got a certificate in nonprofit board service with an organization called Seattle Works, which I volunteered for on a number of occasions. And throughout the years, I've done other volunteering, you know, from registering voters. I was a big brother. I volunteered at Eastside Baby Corner here in Issaquah, you may be familiar with, and as well as multiple events in South Cove, which is a neighborhood that still has an annual Easter egg hunt and polar bear swim and all sorts of things that make it such a great place to live. Enough about me, let's talk about Issaquah. There's a lot going on in Issaquah, from the potential annexation of Cloughane and the implementation of the Central Issaquah Plan, to the issues the council is facing with the LRIG, which I think we've made some progress on in the past week, maybe we'll talk about later tonight. The council continually faces decisions to maintain or improve the quality of life of its citizens during this time of population growth and often national economic uncertainty. The council is tasked with balancing economic development and financial stability with environmental preservation, as well as community services and events. By casting votes and through the budgeting process, council members are asked to prioritize projects based on any number of factors, considering the impacts on those who live, work, shop, and play in Issaquah, not just those who live in Issaquah. If given the opportunity to serve in the city council, I believe I'd be able to strike that balance. On the business side and the economic development front, I have two business degrees, and I have a career in business and information technology. I've also got some ideas right off the bat that I could bring to the council in terms of things to spur economic development, a couple of which are Job Fair, basically featuring Issaquah employers and targeting Issaquah residents. I think prior applicant mentioned the same sort of mentality, to see if we can improve the number of folks that live and work in Issaquah. Another idea I had was to open a tennis facility comparable to the one that's at Robinswood in Bellevue, to fill the void of my beloved Simamish Club, which is still there, but doesn't appeal to me anymore, as I'm a tennis player. I've got a few other ideas as well, but I think there's things that we can do, some new ideas, and a lot of them involve basically enlisting the help and empowering some of our citizens. Maybe we have liaisons or ambassadors for people that live in Issaquah that may work at some of these target employers, that we want to know what's going on at Amazon, or at Expedia, or at Costco, or, you know, and hear those voices and incorporate what they have to do. And when the opportunity presents itself, reach out to those companies and say, "If you're looking to move, grow, expand, consider Issaquah, and here's why." With an eye towards environmental protection, I mentioned I volunteer for the Washington Conservation Voters. I served on the Pro-Park Bond Board, and before I ever lived in the city, I would visit, I would visit the city, basically to go and hike on the trails, as someone else mentioned before, that they're the pride of the city. So Cougar and Tiger Mountain, I think, are, along with the state park, obviously are very valuable to the city. And to summarize that point, to be an effective city council person, you've got to strike that balance, have that balanced perspective, and I think that my experience and then my volunteerism, I have that sort of balanced perspective to bring to the council. The biggest issue facing the city, I'm going to echo the sentiments of a lot of the folks, and I know it takes up a lot of your time, is traffic. Issaquah is surrounded by mountains, bordered by a lake, and has a major interstate running down the middle. As the city continues to grow and draw shoppers from surrounding areas, it's not surprising that traffic is the biggest issue we face. And speaking with a current member of the council last month and reviewing the applications of my fellow applicants, it looks like I'm not alone, and thinking that the city's planned growth could potentially only exacerbate our traffic issues. We're fortunate that the mayor serves on a countywide transportation commission, and that we have a lobbyist now, a part-time lobbyist, and that our former city council member gives us another voice in Olympia as well, potentially to steer some of the transportation funding towards Issaquah. As a member of the council, I would consider this point of view, the point of view that the growth will only exacerbate the traffic issue, and would advocate and vote for policies that serve to improve traffic within the city for its residents and for those working, shopping, and playing in our city. The Central Issaquah Plan and urban village concept reinforce the goal of using alternative forms of transportation, including pedestrian and bike lanes. I would apply those same concepts to improving existing areas of the city in addition to designing new developments. Who would you represent? Obviously, in the city, we don't have districts, so I think the point of that is so that everyone on the council actually has to balance what different parts of the city are advocating for. And as with any council member, I do wear many hats. So while you do represent the city as a whole, you are here as a representative of the area that you're from and the organizations that you're a part of. In my case, as a resident of South Cove, I would certainly act as a voice for my friends and neighbors in the South Lake Simamish area. As an Issaquah CERT graduate, I would give a voice to the hundreds of trained volunteers Issaquah is lucky to have in cases of emergencies. As a volunteer for Washington Conservation Voters, I would advocate for the protection of our city's parks, streams, green space, and storm drainage. As part of a young professional family with two master's degrees in our household, I represent the interests of young families who look to the highest level of safety, education, and recreation. These are also the types of families we want to appeal to as the city's population grows. I would also bring an open mind to the issues faced by the council and enjoy learning more about the areas of the city which I have spent less time in, and represent the thoughts and the priorities of the different areas of the city as I'm out there and I hear more. One question refers to how would you settle disagreements? And in a word, I would filibuster, and I would, no. Until I got my way.
Thirty seconds?
That's how it works, right? I think all the council members and applicants here tonight are here out of a desire to serve the city, you know, and how, and the votes and how we aim to do that may differ over time, but I think, I don't think there's many six-to-one votes from what I see. I think there ends up being a consensus on many issues, and I think it's okay to be on the losing side of an argument and to maybe take it up the next time, or compromise in some way in terms of what measures you guys end up passing, or we end up passing if I'm on the council. Whether or not I agree with any of my colleagues, I'll always maintain a friendly and respectful level of discourse and hope to build and maintain strong working relationships. No thirty seconds?
I'm sorry, I heard the...
Okay, I didn't hear that. One last thing, the job of the council, like I said, is to just maintain or improve the quality of living in the city, and if given the opportunity, that would be just what I would attempt to do. Thank you so much.
Tim, thank you. Our next candidate, and I believe our final candidate, is Cyrus Crone. Cyrus, welcome to the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, council members, community, friend, Nina, neighbor, Brian, thank you very much. Before I begin my remarks, I'd like to first thank the mayor for the respectful and civil campaign against Joe, and as a resident of Issaquah who's been involved in national politics, the vitriol has become too much for our society, and I commend you for your campaign. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, and then get into a couple of the issues that I care about, some of the things that I've done as a resident of Issaquah in my eleven years here. I'm the father of three, husband of one. My wife, Jennifer Crone, was born and raised here in Issaquah. I moved to Seattle in 1995. She snatched me up, and we've raised a family, and I have no regrets whatsoever, and I call Issaquah home. In my career, I've been involved in national and state politics at the federal and national level, and I made a decision about a year and a half ago to give up that life, return to Issaquah, and make a commitment to focus on my family, my career locally, and the city, which I hold so dear to me. I've made contributions to the city, more getting my hands and feet dirty than being involved in commissions, although, as I said a moment ago, I've made a commitment to the city of Issaquah. I have applied for commissions and have also joined the Citizen Advisory Committee I'll speak to momentarily. There are a few matters that have affected us locally that I jumped on based on my commitment to the city I wanted to share with you. First, you'll recall, and thank you very much for the service from the police department, when we had the gunman who held the high school hostage, I think the entire police force from a ten-mile radius of here was at the high school, and there was nobody actually tending to the streets. And as a resident of Bush Street, everyone was backed up and trying to figure out what to do about the situation. So I volunteered as part of the Citizen Corps to help direct traffic and migrate everybody where they needed to go. Second Avenue, which is a very busy thoroughfare, and also not a lot of protection for the children who use that to walk to school, to my knowledge, is not maintained. Over the course of the last couple of years, the seedlings and just sap from the trees, et cetera, has lost about three to four inches of that sidewalk, and I've been waiting for the city to maintain it, and what's happened is that the children are getting closer and closer to Second Avenue, and I fear that one day I'm going to get a call that one of the kids accidentally slipped off the sidewalk and got hit by a car as that traffic moves so busily down that street. So got a group of people together, and we took the afternoon to go and clean up that sidewalk, and the kids now have an additional three to four inches, which is an important three to four inches of space to walk. The woods, both between Second Avenue and the middle school, as well as the woods between Second Avenue and the elementary school, are oftentimes littered with needles, and I take walks through that part of the area from time to time to observe what's occurring, and it looks like maybe we have people sleeping in the woods there in the evening, and what other kinds of illicit drug activity is taking place there. I'm taking a personal responsibility and going to clean up, and it is a serious issue. I know I disagree with Josh a little bit on the skate park and needing more funding for it. I will say, irrespective of the decision to move the skate park, which I'm very pleased the council is doing, that's not going to stop the activity that occurs there, and I think it's important that, you know, we acknowledge that, and we certainly don't want to clear-cut that to make everything visible, but there's got to be some formula there to make sure that the kids are safe. Lastly, volunteering during salmon days and helping local communities and business prosper. I guess I have the fortunate position of being the last speaker, and not really time for rebuttal. Brian and I, as neighbors, have had healthy conversations. I think the only thing that I choose to disagree with his comments on relates to the Southeast Bypass, which I was a supporter of, and if you've spent any time in Austria or Switzerland, they've managed to do a great job with their Alps and highways through those systems, and I think that we could do the same if we approached it wisely. But the traffic situation is severe, and I don't quite know how to address it, both in the Highlands, which I don't know how you solve because the infrastructure's been created, but then in the Lowlands, to move the traffic around towards Black Diamond, you know, it's just, we have limited opportunities there. A little bit more about my experience in government at the federal level. I've worked in the White House twice for a sitting president and vice president, obviously. At the national level, I've been involved in electoral politics, and then at the local level focused from media in terms of how the newspaper industry is suffering and how we continue to communicate with our... we continue to communicate with our citizens at the local level to ensure that they're receiving proper information about their societies. In terms of the biggest challenges, I see obviously traffic that I mentioned a moment ago, urban planning, full disclosure, I have minimal experience with, and our infrastructure. A lot of my efforts previously in the federal government have been involved around the energy grid and the digital divide and how technology plays a part in citizen government and open government and ensuring that the voices of the people are not only heard, but that they get to participate through the use of technology, and there are others who have spoken tonight eloquently on that subject who have backgrounds as well. In terms of who I care to represent, as I mentioned earlier, I have three young children, and I'd like to represent the kids. I look at the funding that the city council has already put forth for the parks and the new pool and the skate park, and don't want to look at that strictly as a budgetary decision, but the implications of how that development will take place and how that will affect childrens and teens over the coming years. The Julius Bone Pool in particular could just be rebuilt status quo with the lanes, but if you go and look at cities and municipalities like Missoula, Montana, and others who have created a community around their pool systems by making it more park-oriented than purely athletic, I would encourage the city and would like to be a part of looking at those aspects of upcoming development. Also, and Joshua, to the point I was making earlier, and you can read my full blog entry at cyruscrone.com/blog, the point that I was making really pertained to the fact that we've got a great venue right behind the police station in Memorial Park, which would be a safe environment, and the amenities and commercial aspects nearby wouldn't require additional funding because we have restaurants and access. I would discourage skateboarders from going to the bars before they get into the park, but all of that exists at present. Lastly, in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm in the process of launching a new local media property, Issaquah Daily, and I'm not sure if that presents a conflict of interest that my aspirations within the community also involve local media and journalism and juxtaposing a role on the city council while publishing a news and information site I wanted to make sure you were cognizant of. Regardless, that will be launching in the not-too-distant future. In terms of contributions, I think the best contribution that I could provide based on my experience and background, eighteen years at Microsoft, four years at Yahoo, is how we apply technology to not only the community through making easier and inexpensive access to the internet available, affordable access to the internet, but then providing citizens a more participatory way to get involved in our government. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your service. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Cyrus, thank you very, very much. So the council will make a decision on which of the seven applicants you've heard this evening at our first council meeting in February. I would like to thank each of the seven candidates for taking the time to come this evening and, more importantly, for stepping forward. We could tell from the presentations that this is an extremely well-qualified group, an impressive group of dedicated citizens who are willing to give their time and put themselves before the council to represent the citizens of Issaquah. So I'm glad that that's a council decision and not a mayoral decision unless, of course, it's a tie vote, and I certainly don't want to be in that position. So again, thank you very, very much. Moving now to audience comments, and for those that are here, I hope you found the presentations interesting. Normally, that would be up front, but special business typically comes before audience comments. So our guidelines for public participation, when recognized, please come to the lectern and use the microphone. State your name, address, and your relationship to the city, whether you are a resident, a business, or whatever. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. This is not a question-and-answer series, but an opportunity to share your thoughts with the city on any topic that you feel is appropriate. If you have written comments, please submit those written comments to the clerk. So with that, I would ask, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have three speakers. First, it will be Hank Thomas, then Randy Bass, and then Lloyd Warren.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Hank Thomas. I live at 3105 Douglas Court, Southwest here in Issaquah, and I'm here tonight to talk a couple of minutes about the Lower Reed Injection Gallery. It's on the regular business, Agenda Bill 6779, I think is the number. And I want to say right up front, as you all probably know, that I've been in opposition to the L rig since the day it was conceived. Friday was a particularly enthusiastic, wonderful day at our house. It was the Issaquah Reporter that arrived and announced that the L rig would be decommissioned, and the runoff from Issaquah Highlands streets would not be in my drinking water glass, and I like that very much. And as soon as my enthusiasm started to wane a little bit and I started thinking about things going on in the world, it wasn't long before I was reminded of the credit card information that was hacked away from Target and possibly Neiman Marcus and others. Wasn't long after that that it struck me that, well, maybe, depending on your point of view, NASA may have exceeded, as in the NSA, may have exceeded some of its constitutional boundaries when they collect and store all of the metadata. And I thought about the water system in West Virginia a little bit, in Charleston, where a chemical storage facility, therefore not regulated the same way as a producer, ends up with just a few feet of sloped embankment between a storage tank that happens to have a hole in it and a chemical that nobody really knows very much about. And I thought of those things, and then I looked at my wall in the den, and there it is, a poster of one of the most basic laws of human nature, Murphy's Law. And simply put, Murphy's Law says that anything that can go wrong will go wrong. And so I'm here tonight to ask you, as you consider in the inter-local agreement how to decommission L rig, please consider Murphy's Law and leave nothing to the accidents that could occur in the future if you possibly can. Make it as difficult as possible for anything to go wrong that will unexpectedly, and it'll always happen in the middle of the night, mess up our drinking water. We really can't afford to have that happen. The other thing that I would ask you to do is consider whether or not it's still possible to get the developer of Issaquah Highlands to participate in whatever storm water management solution we still come up with, because there's been many failed attempts at dealing with that storm water, and I think we still have, I hope we still have, a goal from the development agreement to try to mimic the pre-development conditions when it comes to dealing with the storm water runoff up there. So those would be the two things that I would ask you to, if you would, kind of keep those tucked in your thinking as the inter-local agreement is coming together. Try to keep Murphy out of it, try to keep the developer in it, and we'll probably come up with his finest solution as we can possibly get. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hank. Next, Randy Bass. Randy, good evening. Good evening and welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate being back before the council. It's probably been about thirty years or so since I spoke down here. I used to know everybody on the council. Oh, my name is Randy Bass. My address, the one I'm using today, is 871 Bentley Road, Ellensburg, Washington, where I tend to my cows and anything else that comes across. And my relationship to the city, let's see, well, I'm sixty-six years old, and I've been in and out of the city for sixty-six years. And went to, I was going to say first grade, no, kindergarten, and graduated from Issaquah High School, and I've been doing business here. Well, I started doing business probably when I was about nine or ten years old, cutting fence posts and selling them, and, you know, an entrepreneur or one of those kind of things, you know? And I'm still doing business. And I want to, I'll be wanting to talk to you about Agenda Bill, well, it's East Lake Somamish, where you're going to try to take about a third of my land eventually. But I want to congratulate you guys, you on your victory, and any of you other who were running, if you won, I want to congratulate you. I ran for city council here about twenty-five years ago, and I ran against this lady, I don't know if anybody's heard of her, Eva Pressinger? And I soon, I had a little debate with her, I guess it was Chamber of Commerce out at the fancy hotel, you know? And got to know her, and I kind of realized, you know, she's probably better for the job than me, so I let her win. So you guys owe me kind of a little debt here at Issaquah. You too, Wayne. You've had a job for a long time. And anyway, I've been here in business on East Lake Somamish for over forty years and in lumber business out there and then in the mini-storage business and other little things. And I just kind of, you're going to take about a third of my land, and you're going to go and widen that road for that transportation all these candidates are talking about, so everybody can get to where they want to go and all that. And I've been watching this for years, but, and I agree, you know, Issaquah, isn't it the same as when I was a little boy hitchhiking to elementary school up here at Clark, back when you could hitchhike and, you know, not get picked up by some weirdo or something? But anyway, it's changed. It changed from the 1890s, it's going to change in the next century. So the dog is biting me, and the city's going to have to take some of my land, and for progress, especially for Costco, and I realize they're a pretty big fish, and the city needs that tax revenue, and I could never give them that much money. And so I'm a little fish, but I kind of wanted to put a face to what you're doing. You know, I'm the second landowner probably. I bought it from the Tibbetts family. They probably homesteaded the land. I cleared it off as one of those entrepreneurs that you think you want in your town, and started with nothing and bought and sold lumber and lived on nothing to reinvest in my business. And anyway, I thought it might be good if I put a little face to this Agenda Bill where you're going to make the decision to start construction next year, and you're going to, well, you're going to put me out of business. I mean, it's just, I'm a businessman, I can add and subtract, I'm probably not as good as that one guy who audits cities and businesses, but I can't make any money if I keep doing what I do because you're going to, I'm going to lose a bunch of buildings, and my gross income will go down, but my, I pay sixty thousand a year in property taxes and surface water management fees to the city of Issaquah, and I can't make any money, so I'm going to have to go out of business.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I'm only going to get one shot at him here. Anyway, it's pretty difficult on me. I'm sixty-six years old, and this is going to affect my life, my family's life, my world, and my business, and I just thought you might want to look at the person you're going to be doing that to and realize, you know, there's real people here that are affected by what you do. You can put me in jail, Wayne, and sue me. And I do not want an adversarial relationship with the city of Issaquah. I want to work with the city of Issaquah on the condemnation, and I'm going to have to redevelop the property and have a different, reinvent myself and have a different business plan.
Randy, if you could summarize, we would really appreciate that.
I just appreciate a little mercy from the city of Issaquah and their building department and all their departments. I just, I'd like to have a good relationship and wish you all success with your new roads.
And Randy, we want to continue a good relationship also. Thank you for testifying. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring? Oh, I forgot, Commissioner Lloyd Warren of the Somamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. Lloyd, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Haven't seen so many shirts and ties in one place in one evening in a long time. My name is Lloyd Warren. I reside at 22215 Southeast 38th Street in Somamish, forty-year resident of the Issaquah-Somamish area. A lot of people talk about South Cove. I lived in the first division of South Cove when it was first built, then not a part of the city. I'm here to talk about, I think AB stands for Agenda Bill 6779 relating to an agreement between the city and the Somamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. I'm currently the vice president of the board for the Water and Sewer District, and what you have tonight is a result of a lot of hard work over the last week, which resulted in a memorandum of understanding signed by the mayor on behalf of the city and approved by our commission last Tuesday, or let's see, was it Monday, Monday night? Monday night, after nine or ten hours of hard work on the part of representatives, including the mayor and your staff and representatives from the district, to put to rest, hopefully, two issues that have faced this community related to storm water issues, as Mr. Thomas related to earlier, from Issaquah Highlands and protection of the Issaquah Valley aquifer, as well as how to best address in the future water and sewer governance for providing those services to our community. I'm here to report that a couple hours ago, our commission met in our regular meeting and approved the agreement that you are seeing tonight by a vote of four to zero, and I have two signed copies here. Wayne, you might want to look at this and make sure it's the same here. But this is part one of part two. The memorandum agreement really speaks to a number of companion issues that go together as somewhat of a package, but in dealing with this, we found that we had to address part tonight and then part and put together the rest of the agreement by March because there's a little more work to do. We strongly, as a commission, we strongly urge you to consider this and, along with what the commission has already done, approve this agreement and work hard towards putting together the final details for the second agreement in March. I'd like to thank the mayor for his work and the staff for really taking this opportunity to try to really put this behind us and really focus on what we're really here to do, and that's provide excellent quality service to our customers and residents and to really focus on the customer service. And we've been kind of distracted over the last couple of years in this. And we've been kinda distracted over the couple, last couple of years in this, and I think both governments are, really provide that focus to who, who really are we serving? And that is our customers, our residents, our businesses in this community. And, uh, that's the focus in terms of what we really concentrate on this agreement is getting that done and getting back to the business that we're really here to do. So I'll be here the rest of the evening if you have any questions and, uh, just thanks again to the mayor and staff for taking this energy that we've had over the last couple of weeks and trying to put this to rest and moving on. So thank you very much.
And I would, uh, say in response to that, briefly, uh, Lloyd, uh, thank you for your efforts in this and, uh, your leadership in helping to resolve some longstanding issues. Uh, this is, uh, 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 a, a, a great day and a great evening for both of our jurisdictions. So is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Connie, I believe you're coming forward? Good.
Hi, my name's Connie Marsh and I have a store at one-one-seven-five Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite B eleven, and also live in Isaguá. So this is one of my favorite kinds of meetings, you get to hear all these stories. Uh, mine is maybe not as exciting, but I'm happy. Decommissioning El Rig, I mean, years and years and years and years I've wanted that. So now, of course, I have a request on top of decommissioning it, and that is, now we have to figure out what to do with the stormwater. And, um, I'm unsure the process that that is going to take because the water's been going into the North Fork without a SEPA on it. And so now we're gonna have to go back and I wanna make sure that we go through the proper process this time and understanding the impacts in quantity and quality for the water that we put, wherever we put it, but especially in the North Fork. But I am very proud to have Isaguá in the district take the high road in this as compared to the awful road. So I was happy that you came to talk about East Lake Samamish because I, I keep writing letters to the council and saying, is, is this grouping of projects where you wanna go? Is this where you want to focus all of the city's money for years if you make the decision to accept these dollars and go forth? Because you're basically saying that you're gonna obligate a series of projects. And I still don't understand what the city share is, uh, what the LID is, because my understanding from the budget session is that that whole package changed and I've never seen it again. So I don't know, even know what the project is. So I would, I would refrain from making a decision on that tonight until you can actually understand the consequences to landholders, to the citizens themselves, and really have an open, detailed discussion on whether this is the series of projects that you want to prioritize the city dollars for, for the next, I don't know, at least six years. So, um, please consider that. And then the last one is a little more complicated. Um, I don't know if you guys read the Planning Policy Commission's agendas, but you will see that they are basically going to be looking at and rewriting the comprehensive plan by the middle of 2015. And, um, right now, at least for me, it's very hard to understand where our decisions are coming from. The comprehensive plan doesn't really seem to be directing our decision-making. Um, I don't think the council's direction is uniform and clear in our policies as to where the city wants to go. And this is the opportunity for the council to get together and begin to create a weave that is consistent for our city in directing the future of our town using the comprehensive plan as a policy base. And then maybe a strategic plan coming from that. It feels like we keep going backwards, we create our code and then we go back and write our comprehensive plan to match the code that we created. And I think we need to get away from that habit because it's very hard to get to a vision if you start with the endpoints. Uh, you need, you need to know where you're going before you arrive at your destination, so to speak. So I don't know if, if that was even within your awareness, but if you could put your brain to figuring out, well, who are we and where do we wanna go? And better, how do we direct what we think and feel and want clearly to staff so that they can create the fabric that will, um, inform our community for the, basically the next twenty years? Thanks.
Thank you, Connie. Is there anyone in, anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Third and final call, seeing no one, uh, audience comments are closed. We'll move now to committee and regional reports. Uh, Councilmember Polly?
I have none.
Councilmember Marts?
No report.
Councilmember Share?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The council infrastructure committee met on January seventh. We had a presentation on the upcoming ADA transition study, that's the Americans with Disabilities Act. There were, uh, certain standards, uh, that were passed in, well, originally in nineteen ninety-one and then updated in 2010. Uh, and we are required, as I believe all jurisdictions over a certain number of residents are, to, uh, update and facilitate a transition plan which touches on things as diverse as trail facilities, buildings, parks, and public right-of-way. Uh, there are many departments that are coordinating on these issues. Uh, we did a study that was budgeted, um, I believe it was in the 2014 budget, uh, carryover from last year. And, uh, there will be further work coming back possibly to a, uh, committee of the whole, uh, meeting for discussion. And, uh, we'll be taking a look at these, uh, ADA-related issues over the next several months, uh, for sure. We also, uh, had a presentation on Agenda Bill six-seven-six-four concerning East Lake Samamish Parkway Grand Acceptance, which is on tonight's regular business, and I will discuss the bill at that time. We also had a number of project updates, uh, one related to, uh, striping issues at the, uh, exit fifteen eastbound off-ramp, as well as, uh, upcoming left turn flashing yellow arrows at intersections, which were, uh, part of our 2014, uh, city budget. Uh, we're expecting to have, uh, somewhere on the order of, well, up to, I think, seven intersections, it might be more in the range of four to five depending on cost. Uh, and the, uh, committee was presented with a list of intersections, uh, and we had some comments on those. Uh, areas that will be of, uh, great significance due to the level of service at those intersections and, uh, hopefully will produce some mobility improvements by allowing the, uh, free turn on the flashing yellow. Uh, so look for those, uh, hopefully starting this fall. Uh, in terms of regional activities, the, uh, Eastside Transportation Partnership met on Friday, January tenth. Uh, we finally, uh, approved our procedures, uh, for the partnership. It was, uh, probably an eighteen-month, twenty-four-month odyssey getting those done, uh, but we finally have internal procedures to operate under that match our interlocal agreement that all the members have, uh, executed. We also had a, uh, update on the release of draft Transportation 2040 Plan. We had a, uh, brief discussion on activities in Olympia that are going on in the upcoming short legislative session pertaining to transportation. Uh, we had a little bit of discussion on the King County Proposal for a Transportation Benefit District, uh, as a means of raising some funds for roads and transit. And then we also had the, uh, election of ETP leadership. Uh, Councilmember John Stillen of Redmond was elected as the 2014 chair. Um, in terms of vice chair, we again went with co-vice chairs this year. Uh, both yours truly was reappointed, as well as Councilmember Amy Akerlander of Duval. And, uh, I think that's all I've got. That concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Barber?
Uh, thank you. Um, Services and Safety met on January seventh. There was three things that came before our committee. Um, the first was Agenda Bill sixty-seven-six-seven, which is on this evening's consent agenda. And this is the interlocal agreement with Snacolme-North Bend for PSAP and RSM Services. And PSAP is Public Answering, um, no, Public Safety Answering Point, got them backwards. And RSM is Records Management System. Um, both of those were reviewed. Uh, this would involve the nine-one-one call receiving, police dispatching, records management system, which is done through our Spillman Records. It involves the cities of, uh, it, us, Isaguá, and Snacolme and their partner, um, um, North Bend. It was recommended to move forward and that is on this evening's consent agenda. Uh, the next one that came before our committee is sixty-seven-six-eight, which is arts grants. Um, and this also is on this evening's consent agenda. There were twenty-six different projects were recommended from the Arts Commission. There was a recommended, uh, dollar amount for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They did push that up a little bit to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, a hundred and eighty-one dollars. There was a lot of very good projects and they felt very comfortable in regards to their budget. Um, so there was a fair amount of dollars still in the budget. They, um, had a balance of two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand. And there was a fair amount of dollars coming in from the new theater, so there was no problems, they felt, in regards to increasing that just slightly. So those are also recommended to move forward this evening. And then the last one that we looked at and had some conversation with is Eastside Fire and Rescue and the interlocal agreement. And this piece is on our, um, regular discussion this evening, so I'll keep the briefing very short. Um, this is a project that we've been looking at for a fair amount of time as the board of Eastside Fire and Rescue. It is, um, looking, it's been through an AHAH committee, it's been through Services and Safety, it's had a number of reviews, so we'll continue the conversation on that particular piece this evening a little bit later. So thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Land and Shore met on January fourteenth. We had two items on our agenda. The first item was Agenda Bill sixty-seven-six-six, and this had to do with sale of surplus property and the new proposed Discovery Heights residential development. Uh, this parcel of property is just east of Swedish Hospital. And Discovery Heights is interested in purchasing a strip of land within what's called Track QE from the city, it's currently, uh, city property. And this, uh, purchase would help Discovery Heights, um, provide, uh, um, the dog park, um, a new trail and a pea patch garden that they would like to provide. And the committee recommended, um, approval of that. And so that will be coming forward, I believe, at the February third council meeting. We also had on our agenda Agenda Bill sixty-seven-oh-five. This has to do with recreational marijuana, I-five-oh-two. And, um, you will recall that we currently have a, um, moratorium, a six-month moratorium in place. And now that the Liquor Control Board has come up with its rules, um, the city of Isaguá needs to, um, determine what it wants to do, um, with regards to allowing or not allowing growing processing and retail sale of recreational marijuana. So the, this was the first time that this, um, that the Land and Shore had discussed this issue, um, since the Liquor Control Board came up with its rules. And so the administration is proposing, um, citing facilities in largely the intensive commercial areas and, um, some commercial areas. And we talked for quite a while and we had many more questions. And so we asked the administration to come back at our next meeting, um, and, for a couple of reasons. One is to answer our additional questions and the other one is because the committee felt as though there hadn't been near enough public input yet. We had, uh, one speaker at our meeting. So the administration will be coming, or the staff will be coming back to Land and Shore on February eleventh to answer additional questions. And then I, I believe the Agenda Bill will be coming to the March tenth work session because this is a significant policy decision for the council. And, uh, so the Land and Shore discussed and leadership discussed having that come to a work session. So I kind of wanted to remind everybody that this, you know, everybody watching and, and, um, council members, that this is the time to get involved with this. Like I said, it's significant. There are many opportunities for people to, um, to be a part of this decision-making process. So, you know, come to the meetings, come to Land and Shore, right, come to council meetings, write letters. There's, uh, the city of Isaguá's website has, uh, social media opportunities for people to comment, and so I would encourage people to, to get involved. The next meeting of Land and Shore is February eleventh, five P M., here in council chambers, and the agenda has not yet been set. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you, Mayor Butler. I don't have a report, but I do wanna remind my fellow council members that if you haven't seen it, you have in your inbox, the ballot is in, your opportunities to let us know, uh, what city commissions you, uh, hope to serve on, uh, and, uh, any opportunities for regional, uh, commissions and boards that you may still be interested in or are already committed to. So, um, we've asked that you return that information by Friday and, uh, we'll, we'll, hopefully in the February, when February rolls around, we'll have, uh, the new, um, committees, uh, worked out. And, uh, somebody here tonight is gonna get one or two committee assignments. You just don't know who you are or which committees they are yet, but, um, you'll be able to slot those in the, in the blanks probably, uh, about the same time we make the decision on our next council member. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the mayor's report, uh, there will be an executive session meeting, uh, held this evening to, uh, discuss potential litigation under RCW four-two-point-three-zero dot one-one-zero per N one per N I. And to evaluate the qualification of candidates for appointment to elective office under the provisions of RCW four-two-point-three-zero dot one-one-zero per N one per N H. These are expected to take a total of forty minutes. Action is not anticipated. On Saturday, January the eleventh, I held, uh, my first breakfast with the mayor at Finn's Bistro. I greatly appreciated having the opportunities to speak with different citizens of Isaguá. So thank you to those who were able to attend. If you would like to, uh, join me, uh, during these breakfasts, they are held on the second Saturday of each month at nine A M. at Finn's Bistro on Front Street. Uh, a reminder will be posted on our website. I would love to see you there. Early next month, voters in the Clahani, uh, area will decide whether to join the city of Isaguá or remain an unincorporated King County. The deadline to return your ballots is February the eleventh, 2014. Before the annexation election, the city will be hosting a public open house from two to five P M. Saturday, February the first, at Challenger Elementary School. You can learn more at our website, isaguawa, that's isaguawa.gov backslash Clahani. I am pleased to announce that Isaguá has been named Sunset Magazine's Best Verb in the West. Our community was highlighted for its seventeen hundred acres of open space, walkable neighborhoods, and urban amenities. You can find the article in the magazine's February 2014 issue at sunset.com. The Seattle International Film Festival, the largest film festival in the United States, is joining forces with the City of Isaguá Arts Commission to present the Isaguá International Film Festival. Join us to view the six films that will be presented at Isaguá High School Performing Arts Center on February the first and second, from noon to six P M. each day. Tickets are available at siff.net or by calling two-zero-six-three-two-four-nine-nine-six-six. If you think waste is someone else's problem, think again. Join us to see Trashed for free at our Sustainability Film Series returns on January the thirtieth. Uh, the event will be from six-thirty to nine P M. at the Isaguá High School Performing Arts Center. The film will be followed by a panel discussion of local experts, including King County eco-consumer Tom Watson. We are conducting our annual recruitment for open board and commission seats. Advisory boards are involved in every frame, everything from the Advisory boards are involved in every frame, everything from the arts to planning policies. Applications are being accepted now. For more information, please contact the city clerk's office. For more information on any of these items mentioned in this report, please visit the city's website, again at isaguacwa.gov. And that concludes the mayor's report. Moving now to the consent calendar. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
And what is your pleasure, Councilmember Winterstein?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business. The first item under regular business is Agenda Bill 6779. This Agenda Bill is a resolution relating to the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. It's coming to the council from the mayor, and I will speak briefly to the Agenda Bill. This relates to the comments that you heard during, audience comments, from Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District Commissioner Lloyd Warren. For a number of years, we have dealt with several issues associated from stormwater from the Isaguac Highlands and other issues related to the potential assumption of the district. I'm happy to report that mediation was held on January the 13th, and at the conclusion of mediation, it resulted in a memorandum of agreement, which I signed, and which has also been signed by the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. The, there are a number of specific actions that you will be acting on this evening. The first approves the memorandum of agreement with the district that I signed on January the 13th. The second would authorize the mayor to execute an agreement regarding the timing of any assumption of the district, which is Exhibit C in your package, and it would authorize the administration to negotiate an inter-local agreement with the district pursuant to the memorandum of agreement, and establishes March the 17th of this year as the date for council consideration of that draft ILA. These actions are intended to establish a foundation of trust between the district and the city, and to inner, and to resolve a number of issues that this council and previous councils have struggled with for a number of years, and to resume what I would call normal relations without the extensive involvement of attorneys trying to resolve the issues that we hope to resolve through this action. So with that, is, what is the council's pleasure on that, on this Agenda Bill?
A question, is there gonna be any other staff presentation or information?
No.
Okay. Well, then, I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number 2014-01, related to the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District, the district, approving a memorandum of agreement with the district, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement regarding timing of any assumption of the district, authorizing the administration to negotiate an inter-local agreement with the district pursuant to the MOA, and establishing March 17th, 2014, as the date for consideration of the draft ILA by the council.
Second.
And moved and seconded discussion. Councilmember Winterstein?
Ninety days ago, I didn't think for a moment we'd be sitting here having this conversation. And I do know, as I, over the last year, I got a lot of exposure and spent a lot of time studying this issue, trying to understand it from all perspectives, and a lot of the district's customers let us know as well their perspective. And one thing that I struggled with throughout this whole time was that there was an element of uncertainty about some of the water quality, what's the standard, what's the quality of the water in the aquifer at the moment, and what's, how's it relate to what the L rig as an injection system may be putting into the water? And, you know, I studied it closely. I know that, you know, currently the district, at least in its water quality report for 2006, reported that it does disinfect the water out of Well 9, at least that was the last time it was mentioned. So I struggled with, you know, the Department of Ecology saying things may be fine, Department of Health saying the way they're operated right now, things are fine, the Federal Environmental Protection Agency indicating things were fine. But we here at the city of Isaguac, I think it's in our nature to have a certain ethic when it comes to environmental stewardship, and I think what happened about 90, 120 days ago is that I saw deference given to some uncertainty, and that maybe there was openness to, there may be more than one correct way to handle the stormwater from the 81 acres out of, off Isaguac Highlands, and that injection, as the L rig is designed to do, may not be the only viable solution. And I think this idea of giving deference to some uncertainty created some openness on our side and on the side of the district as well. And the fact that it hap, that our new mayor, Butler, really was very interested and motivated to take what could have been a long-term distraction and move it forward to a new solution. I think, even though your comments earlier, I think you still do like attorneys, whether or not they work with us on this isn't, I, you didn't mean to.
Some of my best friends are actually attorneys.
So I guess that's a long way to say. I think what we're doing, I think this is a good indication of who Isaguac is, this is what we do. We give deference when there is uncertainty about potential harm or to the environment. And water's important, a lot of people told us it was important, we believe it's important, we drink that water, too. And there was a comment earlier tonight, when I heard about where this might go, I'm very hopeful that if that full SEPA will be conducted, and so if there are potential impacts, then they'll be identified, with the impacts from the current plan to perhaps discharge to surface, which means the water into the North Creek of Isaguac, North Fork Isaguac Creek, that any impacts would be identified, and we would mitigate, and that would all follow a SEPA process. I'm not sure that that's gonna happen, but if it did, I think that would be, put the final concerns to rest. So I'm really, really pleased that as a council member, that this item will be positive in moving forward. I'm happy, as a resident of Isaguac, that our resources are gonna be moving in a more constructive way, and I'm happy for all our customers and consumers of both the city and the district that we're going to put this issue behind us and continue to protect the quality of water that you all expect and deserve. So I'm gonna be supporting this resolution and the process we've outlined for moving forward.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm not a water expert, and in fact, before I joined the council, I knew very little about water issues. I knew that you get your water bill, and you pay it if you want water. That's pretty much where it started and ended. And I knew that, you know, what you want coming out of your tap should be clear, and it really shouldn't taste like anything. And we've had the good fortune of having good water in this city. And, you know, this agreement, I think, it sends a strong signal to the public that both the city of Isaguac and the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District are committed to continuing that goal. You know, there's been a lot of bad press, bad blood alleged between our mutual jurisdictions over the last couple of years primarily. And, you know, we entered into an agreement with the district recently on another matter, and this is a further opportunity, I think, to show the public that our jurisdictions can work together for the common good, that folks who don't know a lot about water issues can rest assured that we are taking care of our drinking water, that we are ensuring a safe supply, and an adequate way of dealing with these sort of issues and stormwater and so forth. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the one thing that caught my eye, though, which is the one thing that doesn't look like the others, and that's the part about the Clahani vote, because I'm reading through the whole thing, and it talks about cooperation, and it talks about water safety, and then all of a sudden it says the district won't take a position on the election. And I said, well, that's weird. What does that have to do with the other things? I think it's moot. I mean, by the time this comes back before the council for an ILA or further action, that election will have taken place. I just think it's odd to be in there, that we would be so concerned about the district taking a position. I have to imagine if there was a lot of support amongst the district, that wouldn't be in there. So it concerns me that perhaps we're trying to stop some opposition that may or may not exist. And I just think it's strange to have in an agreement concerning water safety, something about a vote that's coming up in a few weeks. But that being said, the rest of the agreement makes very good sense to me. It's a great opportunity for mutual partnership. I echo the comments that I've heard so far, and I'll be supporting this bill this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Marz?
I'm just, I like the content of this. I just have a question just about how this is structured. We have Exhibit A is a resolution, Exhibit B is a memorandum of agreement that uses the term agreement within it for 14 points, and then, and then C is another agreement that is not yet signed. The memorandum of agreement, Exhibit B, is already signed by yourself. But then the instruction on this bill is the proposed resolution approves a memorandum of agreement and authorize, authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement regarding timing of the assumption. So I guess my question is, you've already signed the memorandum of agreement, which that's part of it, and then the second question is, there's 14 points to Exhibit B, and there's eight points to Exhibit C, and there's some substantive differences between B and C. Can you just explain that to me a little bit?
The agreement that I signed is a result of the mediation that was discussed prior to us entering into mediation, and what you're really doing is ratifying that memorandum of agreement that I signed. That MOA that I signed spelled out a requirement to further define certain elements before the ILA was negotiated. And so that provides certain assurance among a number of key items that were important to the district and to the city, that we wanted in place as soon as possible. And so the last element is the authority for the administration to negotiate the ILA and to bring that back. And the, certain items of this during the mediation, different people had different concerns about the timing. So I don't know whether that makes sense, but the MOA that I signed spelled out that we would do something at this meeting, and that unsigned agreement is what we agreed to bring to the council, and that's what the district approved today by a vote of 4-0. Now, if that's not clear, I'm gonna...
Forgive me, I'm still confused, because there's substantive points in Exhibit B that are different than Exhibit C. Exhibit B really has a number of things that are not in Exhibit C. And one that just, for instance, caught my eye, was the district shall fund up to $1 million for the decommissioning of the L rig, right? That's in Exhibit B, but it's not in Exhibit C.
Well...
And I don't understand.
They're gonna fund that. We just called out four items, or three or four items in Exhibit C, that the district wanted certainty around by a certain date. And Wayne, if you can help me out, if I'm not being clear, perhaps you can say it a different way.
Well, let me, let me give some background that the council may not have been totally aware. That is, during the course of the mediation, the, there was a desire on the part of the district to have the inter-local agreement done by a shorter period of time than what we eventually agreed to. In other words, like today. We believe that, given the public process that the council must go through, the due diligence that staff must do and present to you in terms of the implications of the inter-local agreement, in other words, how much time it's gonna take to reconfigure our plan from the infiltration to a surface discharge, what the costs are going to be, what the risks potentially are of that option. So to make sure that the council was fully informed of those issues, and also to give the public a chance to understand those very same things and comment, it was necessary to give additional time for negotiation of the ILA. So that's why the items that are set forth in the memorandum of agreement that are gonna be contained in the ILA are not contained in Exhibit, in the agreement. Those are just, we had to, in other words, we had to make a two-stage process. The ILA and all the detail could not be done within the timeframe that we can bring you this agreement, which is simply dealing with the amount of time before the city would consider an assumption of the district and so forth, and the other things that are contained in the agreement. That could be done right away. The other, more detailed agreement is gonna take much more time and a much more public process. So that's why there's a disconnect between those two documents. Everything has not been agreed to at this point. The council will have a chance to agree or not agree on the ILA on March 17.
Thank you very much. I now understand. I appreciate it.
That's why I like attorneys. Thank you, Wayne. A question? Sure.
So what route do we see this taking? We've, okay, we're considering March 17th as a regular council business meeting, but committee?
We're gonna, we will be starting work tomorrow to define that process, but we picked March the 17th because that allows this to come before a work, a council work session. This probably, as we envisioned it and discussed it during mediation among ourselves, we wanted this to come to a work session for the, to bring the whole council along at the same time. This is one of those things where I believe that will, that will be useful. Since those are televised, that provides a certain amount of transparency, and it can come back to one council meeting before the next council meeting on, in which to take action. I believe that was the timeline that we looked at, and that's how we picked the 17th.
Okay, so we'll, the final details will be working out shortly.
Absolutely.
Of that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Are you ready to take action on the motion? All those in fa- All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2014 dash zero one related to the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District, approving a memorandum of agreement with the district, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement regarding timing of any assumption of the district, authorizing the administration to negotiate an interlocal agreement with the district pursuant to the MOA and establishing March 17th, 2014, as the date for consideration of the draft ILA signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Uh, moving now to Agenda Bill 6767, East Lake Samamish Parkway Grant Acceptance. Uh, that's coming back to the council from the Infrastructure Committee. Uh, council member, share.
Thank you, Mayor. By way of summary statement on AB 6764, on June 3rd of 2013, the council approved Agenda Bill 6654 to accept a federal grant in the amount of $975,000 for the purpose of designing improvements to East Lake Samamish Parkway, adding curb, gutter, sidewalk, bike lane, and a new southbound through lane from 56th to just north of Issaquah Falls City Road. In August of 2013, the council approved Agenda Bill 6670 that authorized the submission of a Transportation Improvement Board, or TIB, grant application. The city was successful in receiving an award for 3.4 million and change from TIB. Based upon the latest engineer's estimate derived from 30% design completed for the North Issaquah Transportation Network improvements, the total costs for the improvements are estimated at just over $7.5 million. With the acceptance of this grant, the city will be committing to a match of over $2.2 million plus. As a condition of accepting the grant, TIB will require the city to certify complete funding for the project before November 22nd of this year, or the funds will be required to be returned to TIB. They also cannot be used until the city certifies the complete funding for the project. And once the city has done that, we will have four years to start construction. At this time, we have just under $4.4 million, including this grant of outside funding. In addition to the match of $2.2 million and change, the city would be required to certify funding of an additional $884,000 plus to completely fund the project costs. This would require the city to develop a funding package for its share that equals just over $3.1 million. That share could come from a combination or in total from either, one, formation of the North Issaquah Transportation Network Improvements, LID; two, future PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council, countywide STP grant with a call for projects in the spring; or three city funds. The current budget of $9.4 million plus anticipates the formation of a local improvement district and currently has city funds that provide the match for the current PSRC grant. The project will add curb, gutter, sidewalk, bike lane landscaping, streetlights, underground utilities, modifications to intersections at Black Nugget Road and Southeast 62nd, and a new southbound through lane on the west, west side of the parkway from just south of 56th to just north of Issaquah Falls City Road with construction in early 2015 anticipated. The administration is recommending the acceptance of this grant. By way of update, the Infrastructure Committee met on the 7th to review this bill. The committee recommended approval of the bill and forwarding to the full council for discussion on regular business. There's a memorandum regarding funding options as Exhibit B to the bill. With that background, I would move to accept the TIB grant of $3,424,000, uh, $424,037 for the East Lake Samamish Parkway Southeast Project and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement.
Is there, it's been moved and seconded, uh, discussion? Or comments? Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in terms of some additional information, as I mentioned in the summary statement, the council has already, uh, authorized the acceptance of grant funds for this project. Uh, there were questions that we heard earlier, comments, uh, from the audience with respect to the prioritization of this project. Um, if you look at the, uh, 2014 to 2019 Capital Facilities Plan for the city, which is available on the city's website, uh, you can see that this project is a very high priority. Uh, outside of a few, uh, smaller area type of projects such as Dogwood Street Bridge, Three Trails Crossing, Rainier Boulevard, uh, this project and the LID suite of improvements as a whole has been prioritized by the council as, uh, being next in line in terms of priority. So in terms of where we spend our money as a city, um, this is a, a pretty significant bang for our buck. Uh, this will get us some really significant improvements on East Lake Samamish Parkway as well as the entire, uh, North Issaquah roadway network. Now, uh, in terms of funding, how do we get there? It's a pretty expensive project. We've got the outside grant funding and the sources that we've already talked about, including this bill tonight. We've got a city share that we have to come up with, uh, in terms of funding. Now, whether that comes through the formation of an LID, whether that comes from some sort of private enterprise funding, if we work out, uh, some kind of development agreement in the area, whether that comes from simply city dollars, uh, I'm confident that we will be able to find a funding package, uh, for these roadway network improvements. Uh, now, I, I appreciate, uh, the comments from Mr. Bass earlier. I, I really appreciate him coming here tonight to give us, uh, the personal perspective on what this will mean, uh, to him, to his business, um, to his longstanding commitment to the community. And it's not a light decision that we make when something impacts an individual's life or a business or personal property. Uh, it is, it is absolutely not something that I, I would take and I don't think any of us take, uh, very lightly. Uh, we know the impact that this will cause. We know the detriment that this will cause, um, and we have to balance that. And we have to balance that against our duty to the community as a whole. And we have to look at a problem that I think if you talk to virtually any resident in the City of Issaquah and people who live outside the city but commute through our city on a daily basis, traffic, 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 mobility. It's one of the top problems that you will hear and it's one of the things that we on the council are tasked with finding a solution for. And it's not an easy solution. You heard candidates this evening talk about our geology, our topography, and how we are, uh, constrained in many ways with the things that we can do. Uh, the planners of the city in, in the late 1800s could not have possibly anticipated the amount of growth that we have encountered, uh, not just since 1892, but in the last 10 years alone with the increase in our population and the increase in traffic that we, uh, see on a daily basis. So it's not an easy decision for us to make. And I think on balance, um, when you take the, the mobility improvements, uh, that are part of this, the prioritization, the due diligence that this council and the former transportation committee, now the infrastructure committee, has done in looking at this issue, uh, it's something that I fully support moving forward on. And I hope, especially with Mr. Bass and other property owners, that we will, uh, partner with you through this process to make sure that the transition and any impacts are minimized and produce the least amount of impact on your life, your business, your property, uh, which is of utmost importance, uh, I think, and, and paramount to our duty in representing you on the council. So, um, I say that personally, Mr. Bass, I say that to any property owners who will be impacted. Um, but I'm, I'm confident in moving forward with this grant acceptance tonight and confident that we'll get this project moving, uh, in the next couple of years. And folks are gonna see some real improvements out there on your mobility. Thank you.
Other, uh, comments or questions? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I have some questions. Did, uh, Infrastructure Committee have a presentation on the actual proposed project?
Uh, if I could respond, the, um, the, the LID itself and the, the North Issaquah roadway network has come before council committee in the past. It, it went through the Transportation Committee, uh, previously. Uh, this particular project is a part of the overall proposed LID, uh, network improvement. So with the LID, if that's the route the council went, there would be improvements not only on the parkway, but also a connection, essentially a backdoor into the Costco, uh, development. Uh, you've got improvements at 12th Avenue and Northwest Samamish Road. So there's a, a whole bunch of areas that would fall under, uh, the LID. This is one of those. And in fact, if you look at the Capital Facilities Plan, this one is listed sequentially just under the LID because of its, uh, close proximity in relationship to that overall project. It can be separated out. And if we didn't form the LID, this can be a standalone project, uh, with separate funding. So to answer your question, yes, it, it has come before council committee. We've had public works engineering, uh, present to us before. Uh, I see our director from that department here this evening and I'm sure if there's any questions, uh, those can be answered.
I, I think my question is because it, um, it's been quite some time since we, since we saw that. And, um, I, I guess I would like to have seen sort of how this all, how this all fits together. Maybe my memory's not that great, but it's hard to remember details about that. And then my other question is, um, the city's, um, the city's share, 3.167259, right? And so then, and how much do we have now? And how, do we have 234,000, 243,750 or...
Would, I don't know if Sheldon wants to address, uh, the funding issues or the dollar issues, if, if you're in a position to do that.
Sheldon, could you move closer to the microphone or turn it on?
Sheldon, uh, could you move closer to the microphone or turn it on?
Turn it on. Uh, the 200 and some odd thousand dollars, uh, is currently budgeted as match for the current PSRC grant of $975,000. Uh, so the 3.1 million contains that 200 and, I forget the exact dollar figure, but 200 and some odd thousand dollars. Uh, and then the memorandum that was sent out as part of the packet, uh, identified that we have transportation impact fees from two development agreements totaling about 1.76 million.
But those haven't been, those haven't been tagged for this project yet, right?
They have not. It's a series of funding options.
So I just want to know...
Those are, those are impact dollars that are available at this time. They haven't been obligated.
So I just want to know how much the city needs to come up with in terms of our match?
Well, I could answer that.
Okay.
So if you look at the chart on page 102 of your packet...
Yep.
It really kind of shows the cash flow of this project. And so, uh, we started out, uh, June 3rd, June 3rd, 2013 with estimated project costs along with, uh, the project engineering, uh, and what the city commitment is. And then as we go through the chart, you can see with this additional grant acceptance that our, um, commitment are, you know, what we're on the hook for as of after today would be 3.167259. However, we anticipate that, uh, we'd be submitting another TIB, uh, PSRC grant application of $2 million. So that, um, assuming success, and we've been working closely with that agency, uh, the city would be on the hook for 1.167 million. And so the finance, uh, deputy finance director put together a whole list of potential funding sources. And so that would become really part of the overall budget discussion that council would go through, um, as we look at this overall, the financing of the overall project for this upcoming year. So, um, we know there's gonna be some, uh, level of city commitment yet, but given the whole variety of moving parts, as council member Share, you know, indicated, it's part of a larger suite of potential, larger suite of projects, although this is certainly a standalone project. Um, and as I think the year goes through, we'll be able to identify all the potential funding sources involved with this. But at the end of the day, I think with our best forecast, uh, we're looking at a commitment of 1.1 million.
Thank you. Now, my last question is about timing. Is there, um, is there some, have we pressed for timing, um, to make a decision tonight?
The timing issue on this is, is that the acceptance of the TIB grant will make our PSRC grant, the next one that we're anticipating, stronger in application because the state will have put money forward as well as PSRC previously has put money forward. And the, the call for grants for PSRC is going to come up in March sometime. Uh, so in preparation for that, we should have, uh, an acceptance of the TIB grant at a minimum. Uh, because it heightens our ability to get the PSRC grant for another 2 million.
For another what?
For another 2 million, as shown in the table, uh, as Bob was discussing.
And the call for grants will be in March?
Yeah. So we would be starting to work on that grant application in February.
Other questions or discussion?
Go ahead.
Are you ready?
No, Fred, I have a question. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Could, uh, could anybody on the council or perhaps you Sheldon, share with me the impact? Um, what is, what is the potential impact to Mr. Bass's property?
Yes. The East Lake Samamish Parkway standalone project...
Yep.
...has an impact along his frontage, along East Lake Samamish Parkway that's roughly 12 to 15 feet of property acquisition along there to widen for the additional lane, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and a bike lane, along with landscaping in accordance with the central Issaquah plan for the roadway. Uh, what that does is along that frontage, it impacts his ability for rental property. Uh, he has some storage units as well as he has vehicles and all that he, or boat storage right up against his property line without buildings. Uh, so it does affect his rental income and the like. Access would be maintained, so there's no, uh, we'd have some construction-related impacts, but overall, it's, it's his rental income that gets impacted for that.
So it's not, it's, it's not a complete loss of the property or the ability to use the property in some way?
No, it's not. And even if you were to look at the larger suite of improvements, there's additional property acquisition necessary along Southeast 62nd, uh, the realignment of it. And at the end of the day, roughly based upon about 30% design, we have, uh, the remnant of the property, he has about three acres now, maybe a little bit over three acres. He'd have a little bit over two acres at the end of the day. Uh, still quite a bit of developable property, but it does cause a change in his model, his business model. Likely would cause that because that would impact more buildings on his rental property and the like.
So what are, um, what are the, what are the opportunities for us, you know, the, the offer was made to work cooperatively with the city? What are those opportunities?
Some of them are opportunities to, uh, work with the project to make sure the access points are what he needs for the future redevelopment. Uh, timing-wise, working with him on schedule and things like that, working with him through the permit processes as he comes in for redevelopment, coordinating the, his efforts for redevelopment along with our road project efforts, uh, so that we have a synergy on timing and what needs to be built.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Goodman?
I would just feel more comfortable if I could see a presentation on the, um, proposed improvements because it's just been a long time. We have a new member on the council. Um, it's, it's a lot of money. It's a big commitment and that's just how I feel about it. I don't know if there's an opportunity because of the timing to have it come before a Cal meeting, just for a presentation.
I think our next scheduled Cal meeting is, uh, March the 24th, as I recall, or... Other questions or comments? Councilmember Barber?
Sheldon, can you just give us an idea which of the storage units we're seeing on the map here would have to be removed? Are they gonna be removed? So it would be a total loss of the, the buildings?
For the standalone project, which is what we're talking about the TIB grant for, none of the buildings themselves would be impacted, but along the frontage here where the cursor is going in front of this one long storage building...
Mm-hmm.
Currently, there is onsite storage for boats and things like that that go up against property line. So this access roadway in here along the storage frontage would be impacted, uh, right through here. And so access into the storage building as well as the storage that aligns in here would be impacted by the right-of-way acquisition.
So storage for the boats, but then I heard you say access into the building, so there would be... there would be, is there an opportunity to locate access into those storage units from the other side?
I don't know whether those storage units are only accessible from one side or whether they are both sides. I don't know the answer to that question. I can find out.
One side?
And as I mentioned, the Southeast 62nd realignment is going to impact this building, this building, and this building, and maybe a little corner of this building as the, as the new road eventually comes through like this.
So you're saying total removal?
For these two buildings, this building is a, probably a partial removal. And then there's roughly about two acres of remaining land for redevelopment's sake. As parcels get, as pieces get acquired for projects, we're required to do an appraisal and pay fair market value and essentially make the property on a whole for their losses. And so, you know, we still, we still have to do an appraisal, and we still need to go through those processes, but we would hold Mr. Bass whole on those items.
And length of time for the appraisal?
Well, just a minute, just a minute. We need to be precise on what the city's obligations are for acquiring property. And it is to pay Mr. Bass for the fair market value of his property and for fair market value for the damage to the remainder of his property. And the city can go beyond that to a certain extent, but there is a limit, and I don't want any misunderstandings for anybody to walk out thinking that the city is going to guarantee a certain income for the rest forever or anything like that if that were expectations. So there are legal requirements that the city must and will meet when it deals with a private property owner and the necessity of negotiating with the owner to acquire property. And we will follow that, but it is not, you know, it is not a blank check.
So Wayne, the buildings on the right-hand side there, if I am understanding, there would not be access into those buildings any longer. So would those then also be available to receive fair market value for the loss of the income of those, that strip of buildings?
Are you, that building or these?
No, the ones you were on previously, Sheldon.
This?
Yeah.
Well, possibly. And the reason why I can't say anything more definite is because I haven't had the benefit of, or I don't think there's been even an appraisal done of that property. Maybe there has, I haven't reviewed it. So it would, it would depend on the effect of the city's acquisition of property on the fair market value of the remaining property. And if the configuration of that building were such that it couldn't be used at all, then that most certainly would factor into the benefit of the, of the value of the remaining property because a property owner or a person that were seeking to buy or sell that property would have to take into account that improvements have been rendered essentially worthless. So yes, that would definitely affect it. How that would and whether that would, I don't know, and I don't think we can speculate at this point. But as I say, the one thing we must do is pay the property owner for the diminution in value of the remainder of his property, and he's, he will be entitled to that.
Okay. Sheldon, any idea how long it takes to get that fair, or that fair market value appraisal? Is this something that is done within a month's time period? Does it take longer than that? Or what's the, just a ballpark?
Well, the unfortunate, the unfortunate circumstance here is we have federal money in the project, and we have to get to final design and right-of-way approval by Washington State Department of Transportation before we can even proceed with the appraisal.
Okay.
That's not scheduled for a number of months out, probably won't even begin until August, September sometime, which is after the PSRC grant application and after the next round of TIB grant applications.
And because there are federal funds involved, there is a more, I would say, robust requirement for the city to follow in dealing with property owners that we need to acquire property from, including making the appraisal available for their review before we even start talking with them, giving them an opportunity to get their own appraisal. So there's quite an elaborate process that the federal government requires us to comply with in addition to what I was talking to you. So it's a long, involved, and detailed process, and there will be plenty of opportunity for the property owner, for Mr. Bass, to make comment and proposal and so on. The city is not going to rush out and acquire this property.
Have a question, Sheldon. So as of today, so I do appreciate on that, that table you highlight, you pointed out on page 102 that shows kind of the flow. So as of today, we accept this grant offer, then based upon the estimate of the costs, you know, we're, we're on the hook for 3.1 million and change. Then it shows sometimes late in 2014, perhaps getting $2 million in grant money from PSRC. So, so I, so I don't know how much of a, of a bet that is, how much of a sure thing that is. I don't know if you can comment on that. I feel like I'm being asked really to make a decision on 3.1 million with a hope that it will be 1.1 million. And, you know, that's a pretty big commitment. And I, it's, it, so the question I have really is, why 2 million? Why, I mean, is there, is there some, what's, what's the parameters on that grant and why not 3.1 million?
PSRC is still going to look for some local money to be put into the project. They're not gonna, they don't like to see 100% coming from the state and then 100% coming from the feds combined so that it pays for the whole project. Strategically, we're shooting for the $2 million mark for competitive reasons. The corridor, the East Lake Samamish Parkway corridor is a regional corridor. It competes well in that aspect. It competes well in the non-motorist aspects. PSRC has funded the design work at $975,000, of which part of that can also go to a right-of-way acquisition when time comes. And so the likelihood of PSRC giving us another 2 million is relatively high. I'd say moderate to high. You can't guarantee it, you're correct, but we feel confident that we will get a large sum of money again from PSRC to support their design and go into construction with it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cher?
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled up a presentation that was given a couple of years ago to the Transportation Committee, and I'm happy to send you or everyone a copy of it. It's, it's on the North Issaquah roadway LID, and it includes in it some information on the traffic impacts that the LID would cause or alleviate. And in fact, I recall in committee, Councilmember Martz, talking about a specific map that I'm looking at, which talks about the 2030 likely outcomes of traffic patterns with no action or build scenario. Now, keep in mind, this information is based on the entire proposed North Issaquah LID with all the improvements, including a connection, as I mentioned, the sort of backdoor into Costco, improvements on Northwest Samamish Road and other places in, in North Issaquah. And one thing I wanted to point out is, you know, if all of those things get done, and this is not just, again, the Lake Samamish Parkway widening, there are expected in 2030 reductions in traffic along Samamish Road of 12 to 14% between 11th and 220th, reductions in traffic leaving that center by about 20%, reductions of 6% in southbound traffic along the parkway between 56th and 62nd. Now, here's the trade-off. There are potential increases in certain areas, including along Fourth Avenue Northwest, where we have the undercrossing, as well as at the intersection of Issaquah Falls City Road and Lake Samamish Parkway. And I'm sure Sheldon, as an engineer, could tell us, you know, when you make these changes and these improvements, people will go where they can go. And so there can be downstream effects caused by improvements made in one area of the network that can conversely negatively impact traffic in another area. And it, in my mind, raises the idea that we need to do all that we can, and our friends in Olympia need to do all that they can to try to move forward on the interchange improvements at Exit 17 so that we can enhance the front-street interchange and avoid some of these potential traffic impacts that could occur from improving Lake Samamish Parkway further north. So, you know, I don't want to make it sound like it's a total panacea to all our traffic woes because there can be negative impacts if all these projects go through, but it really underscores the need for improvements at the Exit 17 interchange and, and the other improvements on our capital facilities plan. So I'm happy to send around this information because I think, like you said, several council members may not have seen it since it's been a couple of years.
Councilmember Martz?
So I, I voted to move this forward out of committee, but at the time I had, and I think I perhaps still have concerns about the financial commitment that this represents. And when I hear the concerns out of the community, and when I hear some of the concerns of my fellow council members about the coherent narrative of the work that we are talking about north of I-90, I feel like I would prefer that we, as a group of seven, spend some more time on this than just tonight. I feel like it's a large enough potential dollar amount. I think it binds us either to an LID or to PSRC money because, of course, we don't have 3 million bucks sitting in our pockets. So I would like to see more. I understand that we don't have a meeting planned before March, but I think this is important enough. And the combination of concerns off of the council and out of the community together really have sort of, I don't regret the decision of taking it out of committee, but I, but I think this process tonight has unearthed enough things that, that I would like to spend some more time on it.
So there is perhaps a way to get to that point. If there are, if there's specific information that you like, there could be an amendment to bring this back at our next council meeting with a request for certain specific information. That would require an amendment to the motion, and you would have to vote on that amendment to take that action.
And just a quick, Fred, would that then give us the ability to meet all the deadlines necessary for funding, Sheldon? That, if we brought it back at the next council meeting, that would be enough time to provide you the opportunity for the timelines necessary for?
If you were to bring it back and have a decision first meeting in February, yes, that would provide us adequate time.
And so that, that first council meeting in February is February the 3rd, and so the appropriate way to do that, as I outlined before, would be an amendment to the motion. Councilmember Goodman?
I would like to make amendment to the emotion, amendment to the motion before us.
And what would that amendment be?
The amendment would be to bring Agenda Bill, this Agenda Bill, 6764, back into regular business at the February 3 regular council meeting for a presentation on this specific project. That is the subject of Agenda Bill 6764.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Cher?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just want to be clear on what's being requested because if we're asking for a presentation at the next council meeting, it seems from the comments I've heard this evening that, that more information is desired in advance of the next council meeting so that we can actually reach a decision. And I'm concerned with the timelines that have been outlined, that we would have a presentation at the next meeting, and then more questions might arise. And so if there is a way to provide information on the project, we, we won't have an infrastructure meeting before February 3rd, you know, there will be a work session, but not before February 3rd because it'll be in February. So I'm not sure when those opportunities will arise between now and February 3rd, perhaps via email to get the information to the council. I just don't want to see us back in the same position we're in tonight, where we find out a lot of good information, we do a lot of discussion, but then we can't still make a decision. And, you know, I'm fully prepared to support this this evening. I, I feel that this project is worthwhile moving forward on. I understand bringing it back if it's not going to harm the timelines, but I don't want to also see us wait until the 11th hour to get what we need.
So I, if I'm hearing a request from the council, what you would really like is some additional information prior to that meeting and enough time so that you can digest that. And if there are additional questions, follow up individually with staff and be prepared to take action on this Agenda Bill on February the 3rd. Am I, hearing the discussion correctly, does that, I see a nodding of heads. Mary Lou, do you have a?
Yeah, just one additional point. If we're going to ask for additional information in the motion, do we give specifics or do we do that after? Because I'd like to make sure we cover all the different things that Tola talked about. There's financial questions.
Well, I, I would like as much specific information as you have on your questions, and so I would ask that those be provided to Sheldon. You know, by the end of the week, we've had a pretty robust discussion this evening. We've serviced a number of issues and concerns, and apparently there, you know, I've heard a clear desire for additional information. So I would suggest that specific requests for information be directed to the city administrator, to myself, by close the business Friday so that we can assemble the information you want so you're prepared to, to take action at, on February the 3rd because time is short. So there is an amendment on the floor. Any additional discussion on the amendment?
I'm going to take this opportunity right now, Sheldon, you, you and Beth Ann, there's a letter dated the 17th with the financial information, I think, and for me in particular, I think that's an area where I think we need more, we need a presentation and discussion because there's, there's a lot of options. There's, there's, there's different ways that maybe, you know, our obligation, financial obligation piece could be put together that are suggested in that memo. And I think in particular, those are the details that I'd be very interested in, in going through in our next meeting. So I have a procedural question as well. So, so this is an amendment to the, the motion is to, is to, let me find the language, is to basically, is to accept the grant?
And the amendment would change that, if approved, to return to the council at a time certain to continue the discussion and take action. So procedurally, you would vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, that changes the motion, and then you vote on the amended motion.
Okay.
I think that's correct.
I was doing something else, but did somebody make the motion, the main motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is really a motion to defer this, the so-called amendment, I would construe as a motion to defer which takes precedent over the main motion. And so if passed, it would defer the motion to the February 3 date.
And so Stacy, I think you wanted to defer.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to restate your amendment?
Want you to restate it? Wayne says no. Pardon me? You could defer it to a date and time certain.
You would like to defer?
Yes, I would like to defer it to a date and time certain, which is the February 3rd council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are we ready to? Are we ready to vote on the motion?
If we want as much information as possible to Sheldon, I just wanted to make it clear that one of the reasons I want the presentation is for my own education, and I appreciate, appreciate Councilman Scher sending me the, the information that he could find. That helps me, but I also think that we should have the presentation that the public needs to see, so they know what we're doing. So, that's the other reason. And so, I'd like it in not only this particular project, but how it fits in with that whole north area. And I think as Councilman Martz says, he called it sort of this cohesive narrative. And so, that's, that's what I'm looking for, as well as the information that Councilman Winterstein is talking about, the financial information. So, while I appreciate the offer to forward me the information about the project, that also, it's not done in, in public, and I think we owe that to, to the community, to show them what we're doing.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of supporting the amendment to defer this Agenda Bill to the February 3rd council meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. So, moving to our final regular business item, that is Agenda Bill 6773, an interlocal agreement to continue with Eastside Fire and Rescue. That's coming back from Services and Safety, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, a long-term project. This is, we've been working on this for over a year and a half with the Eastside Fire and Rescue. This is a new agreement for the interlocal portion of our contract, and we've got with us Deputy Chief Tryon, who maybe just wants to walk us through a little bit of the points. I know we've gone through an ad hoc committee, we've gone through Services Committee, it's been to a council work-study session, it's been back and forth for, from legal review multiple times, and I've understood that we are, the other four partners have approved this as of this evening. So, we're waiting for a quick wrap-up to this, and let's move on to something more.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. The EFOR Board presents the third interlocal agreement to you for your consideration. The first one was created in 1999, this is the second renewal that's coming before you. Fire Districts 10, 38, the City of North Bend, and now the City of Semamish have approved this ILA, and it's now to you. The ILA is about clarifications. The funding formula was completed last month and approved by all parties. It positive benefits Issaquah and showed it could be updated to meet the needs of partners going into the future. This ILA provided clarification of ownership of all property for all partners. There is consistency of terminology throughout the ILA, and it's supporting exhibits unlike what was in the past. Members to parties, so we now have party stations, wording of property, timelines, all consistent all the way through for the first time in 15 years. There was a reaffirmation by the board in this ILA to create frameworks that support the continued fine-tuning, quality improvements, and oversight. This allows for committees. The EFOR Board has started work on an operations committee that will harness the skills, knowledge, and experience of all the partners, elected officials, and their staff to determine the best outcomes for human resources, service delivery models, public information, budgets, et cetera. The operations committee would expect to draw the recognized experts of each partner for each particular topic that comes before them, and that operations board would then present, our committee would present to the elected members of EFOR for final decision on policy. And finally, the ILA keeps intact the regional fire and EMS concept that has served the residents well for the last 15 years. Their fire and EMS protection would not change. It is our distinct honor to serve the friendliest city, the best burb in the West, and the citizens of Eastside Fire and Rescue, so thank you very much.
I'd like to make a, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion this evening to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the Eastside Fire and Rescue interlocal agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Councilmember Martz.
I just want to say it's a very exciting evening between the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District vote that we took a little bit earlier, and now this vote. We have two of the three major regional issues that have, that we have spent a lot of time and treasure resolving. It's very, very exciting evening, and perhaps the third issue will get resolved next month.
Councilmember Winterstein.
No, thank you. And, and it's not just contract language. I think with approval of this Agenda Bill this evening, we would be committing our city and our, therefore our citizens and our business owners to receiving service from Eastside Fire and Rescue. So, that's fire protection and emergency medical services, as, as Deputy Chief Tryon mentioned a moment ago. So, so this is, this is a decision about how the City of Issaquah will provide fire protection. And, and we all, everybody who owns a piece of property has insurance for fire protection. This is a big deal. And, and, and it's also, it's, this is, we're in a regional model. I mean, this is, it was interesting for me to be involved recently to hear other members of the partnership have some pretty concrete numbers, savings of almost 50% over if they had done it, had their own fire department, as opposed to, so EFOR was maybe half the cost for them to participate. I don't know if we have our specific numbers there. I, I haven't, I haven't heard that before, but I do believe that this is the type of agreement that does, does deliver the quality of services at the best possible price for our citizens. So, we are making a seven-year commitment to this. And then, I want to also make one comment, too, is that this process that we went through, it was, it was noted that there were some, you know, opportunities to improve how, maybe how some of the EFOR managed, it was managed and its duties, that, that may be some, you know, staff-level contribution. So, as, as Greg mentioned earlier, the, the work that's being done to potentially form an operations committee means, from my perspective, and I have kind of fresh eyes on this, is that that board will operate a little bit like how our council is used to operating in the sense, can you imagine, you know, that we as a council staffed all the committees like we did, but we didn't have really staff support at the committee level, and like, we had to write everything? Now, I, it's, that's probably a little bit too extreme of the example, but this, this idea of, of the direction that they're taking of the operations committee, I think is, I'm very favorable to that. And I think it also, I want our citizens to know as well that, that, that this process, though it was a little bit bumpy, I think did raise awareness that we, we can't ever take our eye off constant, you know, evaluation, you know, of our operations, of the cost-effectiveness. And I know that EFOR leadership and the other members of the EFOR Board that I heard are all very committed to, to the partnership, but also making sure that we have the expertise of financial people and service delivery people and HR people to make sure that it's run most effectively and efficiently, and that we keep diligent watch over the overall kind of cost structure. It's a very big cost center for us here at Issaquah. So, I think this operations board is a good step to help us better manage that going forward.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. A partnership can be defined as a relationship between individuals or groups characterized by mutual cooperation and responsibility for the achievement of a specified goal. It's a long way of saying that we get together and provide good service, good fire service, good rescue service, using economies of scale. And I am very pleased and proud of this agreement coming forward. As Council President Winterstein mentioned, it was a bit of a bumpy road getting there. There were dark days and times that we weren't sure what the outcome would be. But I, I really want to commend all the individuals and the jurisdictions that have come together to work hard on this, you know, District 10, District 38, North Bend, and Semamish, who have come together with us to create and maintain this partnership together, so that we can do more for, for our respective communities than we could individually. And in particular, thanks to Councilmember Barber for all the hard work that she has done with the board of Eastside Fire and Rescue, as well as former Councilmember Forkner, and, and all the work that he did as well. Really, a significant time commitment and energy commitment in getting this brought forward, and I don't envy the work you've done in, in the slightest. It's, it's amazing how much effort has been put into this, so I, I thank you for that. And, and thank you to EFOR's administration, and you as well, Greg, you know, for all the work that you've done in, in bringing this forward. You know, I know how well the professional firefighters of Eastside Fire and Rescue perform, and how competitive their response times can even be between stations. And, you know, I look forward in just another week or so to hearing more about who gets the, the awards and who gets the recognition. And I remember last year, there was one crew that, I mean, it was like amazing, it was like, I couldn't even, I don't recall the number, but it was like instantaneous, you know? They'd get a call, and, I mean, boom, they're out the door. And, and I was like, that's not even humanly possible. So, the, the level of excellence in your organization is just beyond compare, and the level of commitment as well to sustainability, and, you know, the, the amazing new fire station that we have on Maple Street, and, you know, the fact that it, it uses less energy than it puts out. I mean, that's just mind-boggling. So, the commitment of this organization is demonstrable, and this agreement will carry us forward into the future for the next seven years. So, I wholeheartedly and fully support this bill this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
If I could just expand, just a dash on Josh. I would also, Greg, like to thank the entire leadership, and if you can send that back to...
Absolutely.
...the, the members from all of the whole board, also to all the partners, to the administration staff. I mean, there has been truly a couple of very large trees that we have burned up in paper through the course of this time to go constantly back and forth and back and forth. But to all the firefighters, John Wiseman, who was so very quietly standing in the backroom as the president of the unit, for all of his great help he has provided to make sure that this has come together, so that this is cohesive with the, the administration, the partners, the actual fighter fighters, and just a very big thank you to everybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other questions or comments? Are you ready to act on the motion? All those in favor to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the Eastside Fire and Rescue interlocal agreement as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Moving now to good of the order, anyone for good of the order this evening?
I have one.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Had the pleasure of meeting with State Parks, and just a quick update on what's going on at Lake Semamish State Park right at the moment. And so, the Boardwalk project has been completed, except for the interpretive signs. The Sunset Beach renovation project is currently in design and permitting. The permitting process can be lengthy because of, they need some permits from the Army Corps of Engineers. So, construction will be completed, probably not until June 15th of 2015, a lot further out than I was expecting on that particular date. The bathhouse, as we are looking at, the study seems to be taken a bit longer than expected, but there is still hope that the Office of Finance Management will clear us to move forward on it. Right now, it's expected to get a final answer from them by next Friday, but that can change. And it's important that we get this, because the building permits expire on June 13th of 2014, and they need to be in a substantial start point in the construction. They hope to have at least a building foundations done before that date in order for the county to consider the permit extension. So, that's a, a real push that we need to make sure happens. But Lake Semamish is starting to have some great improvements, so thank you.
Good news. Anything else for good of the order? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. I recently attended, along with Councilmember Paulie, and I don't remember if, if you were there at the East King County Chambers of Commerce breakfast that was held just a couple weeks ago, and we heard from legislators on the east side from the 5th, 41st, and 48th districts concerning priorities for the upcoming short legislative session. There was a presentation that got a, a lot of comment, in particular from Representative Springer, on a form of tax increment financing, which I think he's calling value capture financing by another name, and some interesting ideas coming out of the legislature, comments from Senator Tom on the Majority Caucus Coalition, or Coalition Caucus, and some developments and expectations for the upcoming session. It's obvious that the legislature takes very seriously the, the duties imposed upon them from the McCreary decision regarding education, as well as transportation issues will, of course, remain paramount in Olympia. It is a very short session, though, and there was, I think, some pessimism in terms of how much can actually get accomplished in just 60 days. But the folks from our district, particularly Representative Rodney and Magendons, and Senator Mullet, are working hard for our, our interests. Thank you.
Anything else for good of the order? Seeing none, then, we will now move to executive session. It's expected that the executive session will take up to 40 minutes. No action is, will be taken.